Good evening, I'd like to reconvene City Council, success agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting and Westminster Housing Authority meeting right now seven ten P M Wednesday, September twenty eight, twenty twenty two. Roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor Tong.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Thank you. You have a quorum. And just for the record, Councilmember Ho did come in, and we duly noted it from the closed session.
Thank you. Next, we have salute to the flat, and be Councilmember Ty Doe. Your vacation will be city attorney. Please stand.
Please rise. And with your heart, ready, begin. Bless the region to the flag of our United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Just bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come and do the city's business. We ask that you would guide the council as they consider each of the issues on the agenda. We ask for grace to make wise decisions for the benefit of this community, and we pray that you would be honored in all that we do. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe and city attorney. Next, we have city attorney close section report.
Thank you, Mayor. There were three items on the closed session. There were two active litigation cases and one anticipated litigation. There was discussion on each one of them. There was direction given. There's nothing to report out of close session.
Thank you so much. Next, we have expert communication. None. City report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to continue inviting the members of the community to please come out and visit our website and submit an application for any of the vacancies that we currently have open. I can.
Oh, that's really, we're pretty, we thank you for it. Next, we have city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I am not going to be as short and sweet. So, so October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and of course, our Westminster PD or Westminster Police Officers Association and the Police Department always came up to bring awareness to breast cancer during this month. And so, our uniform personnel will be wearing pink patches. This is something that's traditionally been done. In addition to that, we also have pink patches that will be available for sale, and all proceeds go to the Susan G. Komen Foundation to help fund research to fight breast cancer. So there are a variety of different patches, as you see on the on the overhead there. So they'll have, again, patches and keychains available. So there's actually a table right now for anyone who is physically here and would like to support the cause. There's a table outside for that. The Westminster Police Department in, you know, in partnership with our Public Works Department, they'll be hosting another catalytic converter etching event on Saturday, October fifteenth, from seven A M. to eleven A M. over at the corp yard, and that is at one four three eight one Olive Street. The last catalytic converter etching event was extremely successful. So we recommend if you want to get in there to, you know, to line up earlier than than not. So there's the flyer that's available. And then, of course, donations are being accepted for the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster as well. Our Community Services Department, we had a very successful fall festival that took place this last Saturday, and of course, with our Public Works Department and other other staff who manned our community information booths and, you know, and other activities that supported the community. And so I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out there to our fall festival. I did hear that some people were not aware that we had a fall festival. So I encourage you to, you know, follow us on, follow us on social media, you know, check our website and our calendar as well on the website where we do have that type of information listed. You know, I know, we're not really used to having as many events in the city because of the pandemic, and so we're trying to ease back into those types of larger community events. But we will be doing that, you know, more. Our next event is actually going to be our trunk or treat event, and that's going to be on Friday, October the twenty eighth, that will be here at the Civic Center, which is, which deviates from where we normally have it. We normally have it over at the Family Resource Center, but this time, we're actually going to have it at the Civic Center. And after the trunk or treat event, we'll have a, you know, a movie that will be playing in our sunken garden. So that's exciting. So please let everybody know that we are having that event. Our fall youth sports programs are also beginning soon. So we are offering a number of soccer and basketball classes for various ages. So check out the Fall Recreation Guide online for more information, how to sign up. On Monday, October tenth, at six P M. over in the East West Room over at our community, Community Services Building, we are going to be hosting a community meeting and presentation regarding our navigation center. I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, that the city has partnered with the cities of Garden Grove and Fountain Valley to bring a navigation center to this region. It will be in the city of Garden Grove. It's actually going to be on the agenda tonight, you know, for some discussion. And, you know, we're inviting anyone in the public who wants to learn more about what a navigation center is. You'll get to meet some of our staff, and HomeAid will be there to, they, they, they are leaders in our community in regards to the battle against homelessness. They'll be there to provide information about what a navigation center is. So again, Monday, October tenth, six P M. And last but not least, if I could have Division Chief Ron Roberts come up to the podium. So, as he reluctantly comes up. So today happens to be his last city council meeting, as he is retiring after many years of service to the Westminster community. He actually started out in Westminster when we had our own fire department back in nineteen eighty one. And when the, when, you know, we went over to Fire Authority, he was with the Fire Authority, did some other stints that were not within this community. But it's wonderful to see that he's full circled back to our community after all this time. And so we just want to thank him for his service to our community and his years of dedication and hard work and ethic, and we will definitely miss him. So thank you for all that you've done for the city of Westminster. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your report, city manager. So we don't have any special presentation. So next, we have all the communication.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting. The members of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Any person wishing to address the city council in person can complete the speaker form, a few of them have, and then from there, after the in-person speakers, then we'll continue on with Zoom. At this time, I'd like to call Hung Nguyen as our first speaker, followed by Terry Rains.
Thank you very much. My last name Hung. My first king in country is Hung also. Thank you very much. I'm reverse. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, good evening. Today I have a subject E regulation forty nine, I'm misspelling, it's forty nine fifty three. Ladies and gentlemen, I, the underside is Nguyen Hung, a Westminster Californian, I to seek a tree. I am writing today to inquire about regulation four nine five three submitted by Mayor Keita and passed on September eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Meet Nam Quan Nguyen seriously violate the regulation four nine five three from you. Let's see attachment picture of below. When he had be trade really met Caution General Nguyen Chatuan on September eleven, two thousand and twenty. When appear in a party with a teammate, family at mort fair, not press interview. And because, this is the reason I meet Nam Quan Nguyen had to reside former traffic commissioner of the city Westminster. I repeat, in the spirit, regulation four nine five three, the city Westminster Caution had decided with the signature of the five caution member as follow. Section one, the Westminster City Caution formally pass this regulation to strongly condemn the campaign interruption and misinformation in the city. As perpetrate for certain individuals who had close tied with the Hanover regime, to call a zip individual to immediately disavow their untenable political position that is outside of a community form norm, and to call the Hanover regime to key the decision from covertly supporting and political will of Westminster resident by the way of E O thirty six in Vietnam, you can call the regulation thirty six. In section two, the city caution and corrections on residents of Westminster to raise their voice again, the individual who fit the profile of an either and up better at reference, references in the above characteristic to encourage them to return to this because of the freedom and the democracy instead of the continuing to cause turmoil and disorder, which only have sustain the communist government in Vietnam. Thus, meet Nam Quan Nguyen personally clearly violate the regulation forty nine fifty three of the city Westminster Caution on September eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and was still meet the major ta, the Chi Chi ta, thought up the regulation forty nine fifty three, which were prepared by himself when he supported to meeting Nam Quan Nguyen to run for the member of the city Westminster Caution. Do you want to bring the more friend to give a majority power to decision thus are in the interest of the fraction based on this serious violation of the city rule because of the conflict of interest of the protect of the faction, as well as the meet Nam Quan Nguyen violate the taboo with the regulation forty nine fifty three and challenge a hit voter on Facebook. I will bring Nam Quan Nguyen to the court because he insult me in the upcoming election relation discussion in November two thousand and twenty two on his YouTube channel. He bring my name on his campaign, which I am complete in no sign up. Thank you.
Do you have any question?
Terry Rains is the next speaker.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I'm in the Citizens Academy with our great police departments. I'll have to speak and run again. I emailed city staff about errors in the contracts, proclamations, and ordinances in the agenda packet. So who do I send my invoice to? Our city council is so disrespectful to the community. At the last meeting, three council members left the dais three times each for a combined total of sixteen minutes. Doe left twice in just ten minutes. Ho was eighteen minutes late for the closed session then and today, and left the dais right when the regular public comments started, just twenty-two minutes into the regular meeting, missing my comments entirely. I get that sometimes nature calls, but these meetings are literally your job, and your constant coming and going is a huge distraction and shows total disrespect to the community. So do better. Was it the county or city's fault that the M O U for item three point two is just now being signed? It was effective over a year ago. Oh, and someone should tell county council how to spell county council, S E L. See the signature line. Regarding item three point four's amended ordinance, the city should not set law based on people and personalities, but on policy. Adding, the new council will review the city's purchasing policy limits upon any change to the city manager position is doing just that. That is not how law or government should work. The position would not change as it's worded. The person holding the position would change. Item five point one, I'm excited to see progress on the navigation center partnership and knowing we can reimburse the general fund for the four million startup cost with ARPA funds. Please acknowledge the vision, effort, and effectiveness of our city manager in getting this partnership off the ground. Item five point two, the ARPA funding proposal, the city is way behind everyone else on this with only one discussion so far, almost eight months ago. Tonight's staff report is incomplete and not transparent. Again, the prohibitive use to offset either directly or indirectly a tax cut made since March third, two thousand and twenty one does not apply to cities, as wrongly stated in the staff report, but regardless, it's a bad idea. The proposed useless is vague and lacks key information. Same with the revision list. Why not provide more details to the staff in the staff report in writing so the council and the public can really know where this twenty-three point seven million dollars will go? Questions by item number include, number one, exactly how will the eight hundred thousand be used to address crime increase due to the pandemic? Number two, why only one year of funding for the dispatcher versus originally four with no explanation? Number three, why did the E O C consultant costs go up thirty-eight percent? Number eight, the CAD RMS system was not removed, just reduced, so it's listed wrong on the revision list. Number nine was originally listed as H vac upgrades for city buildings, which counts a question, and now it's listed as clean and safe environment upgrades. Number eleven, playgrounds for just five parks now, not ten, but that's okay. But why aren't we funding more programs that benefit all residents of all ages and especially low-income households? Number twelve is Lake Park building improvements. Does the city own that building fifty fifty with the historical society or? Number nineteen, increased cost to the Fountain Valley not partnering with this, but our other cities? Number twenty, the affordable housing development was cut twenty-five percent. Why? The only real affordable housing has rents as a fixed percentage of the tenant's income and are subsidized. Please explain details of the new items, number ten, thirteen, and seventeen. Counsel, how about this time, you actually ask good questions and demand details about these proposed uses. Item five point three states the rebate amount provided was five hundred dollars per new or used vehicle, but it was actually for just new car vehicles purchases, not used. Tyler Dip pushed for this as a way to appease local dealerships due to major SS, even though the sales tax on a car purchase is based on where it's registered, not where it's bought. The city might restart this program, but really should develop a broader shop Westminster program that benefits all types of businesses in our city. Kudos to staff for the great fall festival event. Only Vice Mayor Manziel stayed for the full day, but the rest of you were too busy campaigning, I guess. Hopefully we'll have more events like this, but first, we need measure Y to pass in November. Thank you for the informative mall specific plan open house. I asked Tyler Dip a direct question there, if he was working as a consultant for shop off. He lied straight to my face three times, saying no, and that he didn't know anything about development. So why would he be? I agree. I then asked the two shop off representatives there, and of course, they confirmed that he is, and we're shocked to hear that he lied to me. They went over and had a little chat with him after, which was really fun to watch. Why would a former council member and assemblyman lie if he had nothing to hide? Shop off did confirm they would love to buy out all the other property owners and take over the entire site, but talks thus far have not progressed much. We talked at site specifics for almost a half hour. They said with the parcels they do have, they expect to submit a project plan within six months of the city adopting the specific plan. The election is just forty-one days away. On October eighth, Saturday, at Bolsa Chica Park, from ten A M. to twelve P M., there'll be an informal candidate meeting greet. All the candidates have been invited. I'd encourage the public to come out and meet your candidates. I'm still a no vote for mayor with the four bad choices we have. If I lived in District One, I would vote for John Dentil and District Four Terry Bu when hell note Amy West, double hell noted Nam Quan when. The only sure vote for all of us in November is yes on major Y to save our city. So let's do this, Westminster. I've got flyers if anybody wants them. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Don Anderson, followed by John Dentil.
Hi, good evening. I'm here as a representative of the Westminster Historical Society in regards to the A R P A funding request for Blakey Park. And Ms. Rains brought up a question about the park, and I'm going to just provide some information. I haven't talked to Ms. Rains, but just coincidentally, I'll provide some background information about the park and about the request. Leora Blakey arrived in Westminster, the person the park is named after, in the Westminster Colony in eighteen ninety-four. She was three years old at the time and arrived in a covered wagon. She lived on the property until her death in nineteen eighty-one. In her will, she gave the city of Westminster and the Westminster Historical Society an undivided one-half interest in the property. In the property, which is a two-acre parcel, which is now Blakey Park, home of the Westminster Museum and the Historical Society. There are presently six buildings on the site, which were moved there by the Historical Society, and they include the museum building, which was built in nineteen twenty-nine as the Midway City Women's Club, is located near Beach and Bolsa. There was a barn, farmhouse, and blacksmith shop located originally at Bouchard and Bolsa, owned by the Warren Family, built in nineteen fifteen. That's a hundred and seven years old now. That was moved to the to the park site. There's the McCoy Hair House. That was the first pharmacy in Westminster, in the colony of Westminster, built in eighteen seventy-four. So it's celebrating its one-hundred-and-forty-eighth birthday at this time. The newest building is the Shutter Shack, which was built in the seventies. It was in the parking lot of what's now John's Market as a photo kiosk. And there's one non-building that's there, the original windmill that provided water for the Leora Blakey, for Leora Blakey's home. So in regards to what the Historical Society does, well, our main goal is to preserve and share the history of Westminster. We give free tours to third-grade students in the Westminster Unified School District during the year. We give free tours to the public the first Monday, the first Sunday of the month, and by appointment. We make the museum available for community groups, and we provide historical information, documents, and photos to individuals and organizations doing research. In the past two and a half years, the Westminster Historical Society has raised, or actually we've raised money prior to the two and a half years. We had raised probably about five or six years ago, we raised money, and we use that money during the last two and a half years. We put up new fencing and gates in the front of the property, new exterior lighting in the parking lot and barn, new roof installed on part of the museum, new exterior siding and paint on the McCoy Hair House, new exterior siding on the Shutter Shack, and new interior lighting in the museum. With these projects completed, we're now just about out of money, and because of the pandemic, we've been unable to obtain money through donations and fundraisers. That's why we're requesting A R P A funds, so we can have, and here's, so the projects provide some additional information for you. So we can provide new siding roof and a concrete floor in the barn, new siding on the farmhouse, new siding and roof on the blacksmith shop, repair the wood window frames of the museum and paint them, and replace the plaster ceiling in the museum. Thank you.
John Dentil, followed by Tony Bu.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. I'm here today to talk about the monument, and I promise you I'll make this quick. Most of you thought the topic of the monument was over until November ninth, the day after the election and the vote of measure Y, keeping the one percent sales tax at status quo. But sorry, I had a problem with this. Measure Y, which I support, is supposed to be used to help keep our cities from going bankrupt. I'm not to, and not to be used foolishly, look like it had in the past. We need to balance the budget. Every dollar the city spends should be well-needed expenditure. We, the people, had pushed to get measure Y on the ballot. Well, this will be done in vain if the voters of Westminster think that the spending habits of our city has not changed. During the last city council members, during the last city council meeting, I sat here and listened to the discussion of where the monument should be placed, and if the monument committee will cover all the costs associated to the monument. I sat there in hopes of hearing someone yell out, let's balance budget instead of who will cover the cost. Councilmember Doe, thank you for attempting to put this behind us, and sorry you were voted, outvoted. And I was told by people close to me to stay clear of this subject, but I'd be a hypocrite if I did. Because during the discussion of measure SS, I asked you all to be brave and do what was right for the people of Westminster, and you did. So now it's my turn to do the same. Here are some facts that you may or may not be interested in, or you may not know. But on December sixteenth, nineteen eighty-six, the Orange County Sheriff's Advisory Council formed the committee to have the memorial, to have a memorial built for the fallen officers in Orange County, California. Memorial was built in the Plaza of the Flags located in San Ana Civic Center. Memorial consists not only the Orange County officers and deputies, but outside agencies such as Los Angeles Police Department, who had paid the ultimate sacrifice in Orange County. For twenty-six years, the Advisory Council spent an average of twelve thousand dollars a year to battle the vandalism to this memorial. The vandalism included being spray painted, defecated, and urinated on, pigeon, rats, and roach species, homeless camps on the monument, and of course, drug paraphernalia left behind. I personally remember working the foot patrol in that area and smelling the intense odor of urine. I remember the homeless encampments that overtook the entire area. It was so bad, you couldn't even, you couldn't even read the names on the plaques of our fallen officers. Due to the vandalism, the homelessness, and the never-ending cost of the maintenance and repairs, the committee voted to remove the monument out of the, out of any insecure public location and have it placed at the Orange County Sheriff's Academy in Irvine. This gave the people a safe location to visit and full access to the monument with very little concerns of vandalism. Soon after the vote to remove the monument, the instruction crew advised the committee that the monument was so badly damaged that the only part of the monument worth saving was the bronze name plaques that was once paid for by the Westminster Memorial Park. Eventually, the name plaques were removed at the cost of five thousand dollars and saved for the new construction site. In May of two thousand and thirteen, the cost of two, in May of two thousand and thirteen, at the cost of two million dollars, the new memorial was built using only the mentioned bronze plaques of our brave law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. This memorial now bears the names of fifty-three law enforcement officers who gave their lives protecting the citizen and fellow officers of Orange County. In May of two thousand and twenty-three, a fifty-fourth bronze plaque will be added to this list, honoring Huntington Beach Police Officer Nicholas Miller. If you all remember in June of two thousand and twenty, following the George Floyd protests, an additional hundred and eighty-three memorials, statues, historical landmarks were torn down, vandalized, or purposely removed. Out of the hundred and eighty-three monuments, a hun- Okay, I'm out of time. All right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Bu.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members, and good evening to all city officers and police department, all the people who work very hard to keep our cities safe and sound for the past years. I am Tony Bu, been a resident for twenty years, and I concern about the growth of our city. That is why I keep going up to the podium to express my opinions and to tell the people whatever I feel that is not right, so that we can correct it, and to make our city better place for all people and also for the future generation to be here. So last month- So last month, I had a chance to meet five Westminster Police Officers at the coffee shop, and they are very friendly. One of them asked me, do you run for any position? I said, no. Do you know Tidol will be mayor? I said, yes. Will you support the title? I said, no. They keep asking me, why? I tell them because Mr. Tidol has the reputation that he's had make bad reputation to our city. He called our city, Westminster is officially now Ho Chi Minh City. Shame on you when you said so in your media, social media. So you have to apologize to the people if you want to run as a city mayor or you want to get a vote from me, okay? So remember that. You have to apologize to people on your bad mistake. Because Westminster City is a city of every people, of many ethnic. And not only of you, you are both people. You escaped the Ho Chi Minh City and now you want to convert it to a Ho Chi Minh City. You are bad worm of an apple. So that part of it, and recently, one week ago, I received a leaflet, a letter from Kimberly Ho. This is one I show. He said, reelect Kimberly Ho, mayor of Westminster. Did you use the word reelect? That means you are mayor. So you try to cheat people that you are mayor and you want the people reelecting you. That's bad. You always brag that you are the best English-speaking of Vietnamese community, but with this one, you use the wrong word, reelect. Only the kindergarten, they might not understand. But most of the American people or all the other people will know that you are trying to cheat people. You try to make the people think that you are the mayor of the city of Westminster and reelecting you. Shame on a city council for six years in that position. I used to have you to be in that position, but now I have to raise my voice that you are not fit to be a mayor. And in the future, you may, your picture may not be fit in that empty space over there because of what? Dishonest, not honest and not trustworthy. Six months ago, you, Tidol and Mr. Manzo tried to tell people not to vote for mayor position. And now you and Tidol try to run for a mayor. Shameful, when you make a wrong decision like that, it costs the city four hundred thousand dollars to put it on the ballot and make a lot of people worry about our city. So I tell you that you are responsible to reimburse the city of the four hundred thousand dollars to the city budget. Otherwise, you or your next, your son and daughter will not have a chance to come to this city as an officer. Thank you for your concern.
The next speaker is Viet Youth Media.
Good evening, everyone, council members. Uh we don't have a translator here tonight, so I guess I'll just have to speak for myself here tonight. I'm sorry if I'm ranting because I didn't have time to write anything down. So I'll start with Mayor Chi Tho and Councilmember Nguyen. I guess the campaign is heating up. And I saw you two go on the Vietnamese media, just like uh council member Tidol and council member Kimberly Ho have accused you correctly. Uh when you guys are using the Vietnamese language, Vietnamese media to mislead the Vietnamese people, to lie to them, when you blatantly tell them that there's no way Westminster is gonna go bankrupt. And you two know that is a total lie. It's the city, the staff, the police chief, everybody has told you guys, presented you guys the facts. And I said, that's facts, not my opinion, not something that people make up. That's a fact. The city will go bankrupt if uh I guess it's Measure Y, right? Did not and would not be approved by the residents of this city. So I can understand if you guys tell us why, blame it on someone else, explain to us like, oh, it's because it's the COVID, because of the former mayors or whatever the reason. But you cannot go on media and tell the people that we are doing okay and there's no way that Westminster is going or facing bankruptcy. You even had the ball, the gall to tell people that we make it up to blame you guys, to create chaos, to scare people. And you know that's not true. And like I said, you are using henchmen. And I have proof they are thugs. Well, not really criminals. I don't know how the police or the chief or even the Tidol is a police officer would categorize Nam Quan. But we have record showing that his wife has asked the court to issue a restraining order against him. Hey, you endorse him, so I have the right to tell you. You're endorsing a crook, and that's not right because you're trying to get the majority back, right? Is that more important than having-
I said, attorney, I don't think, I don't think we, we allow to say something personal issue for someone else not here.
I would take this as criticism.
No, no, he more than welcome to redesign me, but I mean like he redesigned-
I am criticizing you and the one that you endorsed to be our council member, future council member, a crook.
Yeah, it's permissible, I would say.
And that's totally irresponsible, self-serving. You care more about your future, your power. You want to get the majority back, right? So you're willing to endorse a guy who put a gun to his wife's head and the judge issue a restraining order against him. You knew that and you still endorse him? What kind of person are you? Are you willing to put a criminal or a thug to represent us? Just to be your henchman, to keep your power intact in this council? I'm very disappointed. And Vice Mayor Manzo, you know, I've been criticizing them. I apologize for us electing the people that representing us, the Vietnamese community. But that doesn't mean that I apologize for being here. I apologize for being a Vietnamese. Apologize for being part of this community. You are an immigrant as well. You, so you should know that we are a diverse city. Diversity is our identity. And Westminster, Little Sagon is our future. So I will not apologize for us and I will stand up against races. So I hope you would protect your constituents, but not the races that-
Time's up. Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Whittingham.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Peter Whittingham, appearing tonight on behalf of the Orange County Auto Dealers Association. It's a pleasure to speak with you briefly regarding item five point three on your agenda this evening, which deals with a renewal of the resident incentive program for the auto dealers. Uh that program initially was adopted prior to the uh the adoption and approval of the sales tax, the original one cent sales tax in the city. Uh the program ran for five years with a three million dollar cap that was not met, in fact, because frankly, two years ago, we saw an unprecedented situation. And whereas auto dealers typically had three to four hundred cars on their lot, they were down to thirty. The program, though, was overwhelmingly successful. And one of the things I'll share is we've done polling that shows that roughly a third of residents understand that where they buy their car does not determine, the sales tax is not determined, it's where it's registered. So unfortunately, when folks are out on the market for a new car and they say, oh, gosh, that sales tax is nine and a quarter, nine and a half here, et cetera, I can go next door to Huntington Beach or what have you and buy that car. Obviously, disadvantaging the the auto dealers you have here. You have four certified auto dealers here in Westminster. And so for this reason, in other cities that have adopted uh sales tax increases, Santa Ana, Garden Grove, Placentia, the like, uh similar programs have been implemented and have been very successful, been very well-received. So we're here tonight to encourage you to renew this program. Um obviously, the item tonight is to get the council's direction on that. We would very much appreciate the opportunity to have this come back to your council for its approval uh prior to the election, hopefully at one of your meetings in October, to uh implement and and know what the specifics of the program will be going into the election. So I am happy to answer any questions, but we greatly appreciate the opportunity to have your consideration this evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And now we'll switch over to the in Zoom participants. We did have an advanced request by Dan Corella. And you may begin speaking.
Good evening. Councilman Doe, during the last City Council meeting, I was offended at your loud discourteous tirade directed at your fellow council members. I think it was uncalled for and unnecessary. Earlier, however, your support for Westminster Park as a monument site got my attention. Mayor Tho, I think, can verify that for the entirety of his position as mayor, Westminster Park has been my personal priority. For twelve years, I have visited Westminster Park twice a day, every day of the year. Every morning, I walk my little dog on the circuit covering the eastern half of the park and I finish a daily neighborhood bike ride on a path through the park on my way home. I pick up trash, report graffiti and also report any maintenance problems such as failure of the park's lighting system a number of months ago. Now, there are roughly forty thousand un-Vietnamese residents of this city who have no idea Quang Trinh Monument exists, and if they did, it would have no meaning. I commend the council for consistently keeping this fact in mind as they struggle with the dilemma. I am also deeply impressed with the devotion and sincerity of the Monuments Committee. I personally became much more knowledgeable after a personal meeting with the committee arranged by Councilwoman Ho. I first heard of the monument from Chrissy Land, the director of the Challenger Softball League, the league for physically challenged youngsters. She was very concerned because the original suggested monument site was near Hazard Street, close to both the new children's play area as well as the softball field used by her league. That site never should have been considered because of the monument's potentially negative effect on traffic flow. In my attempt to be fair and open-minded, I met with one of the Monument Committee members who lives several blocks from the park. We examined two park sites, which would not take up park recreational area. Neither were acceptable, one because of the site's proximity to a neighbor's window and the other because of the close proximity of the restrooms and also because two of the park's homeless encampments were nearby. Then Councilman Doe came, one part of your tirade with which I could really agree, the necessity to find out what the nearby residents actually felt about Westminster Park being the site of a monument. Over a three-to-four-day period, I conducted my own survey. I talked to twelve people who live within two blocks of the park and showed them a picture of the monument. Four were Vietnamese-Americans, four were Hispanic-Americans and four were Caucasian-Americans. The result, eleven no's and one maybe. The maybe came from the older leader of the Buddhist Boy Scout troop who meets every Sunday morning next to the former Buddhist monks' residence at the southeast tip of the park. His comment was, maybe the monument could be placed in the northeast section of the park. It is true, that section does not have any recreational activity at the present time, but there is a large tree in that northeast corner. That tree provides shade and seclusion, so that often transients go there to sleep or drink beer. And occasionally heterosexual couples go there and engage in intimate physical relations. Their discarded condoms often end up in plain sight on the ground rather than the trash can nearby. Also, the block wall next to the park's northeast opening is a frequent source of graffiti, twelve times in the past couple of years. The growing number of homeless who have moved in and out of the area next to the recreation, sorry, the restroom's east wall and the softball field's dugouts have created a different park environment. That environment is so different from just a year ago and it has created an atmosphere that makes my wife unwilling to walk or bike in the park alone. These problems are not always apparent to the occasional visitor, but they are there and they are growing daily. I really question whether this is the place for either a monument or monument visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker with their hand raised is Amy Walsh. You may begin speaking.
Hi, I know I've said this in the past, but I really, I'd really like for the public not to be interrupted when they're speaking. It's just, it's just disrespect, just plain disrespect. And I'd also like to talk about the fact that um I'm not sure who puts on the product, or not the production, but yeah, I'm in, I guess at this point it is a production. When people are speaking, people are getting muted. It's cutting people off. When we are, everybody that was there was clapping for the gentleman that was retiring earlier. It, people, the clapping was cut off. I mean, this happens constantly. And I mean, I, it would have been nice to hear, you know, the audience and whoever else clapping for the gentleman that was retiring. I just, this really needs to stop. Whoever is doing this, I mean, I don't, which the, you know, the channel that does this, our local cable, whatever, they really need to take a little bit more care in it. And one last thing that I wanted to speak on. You know, people have already talked tonight about the fact that the council has you know, been a little rude to our different speakers, to the people in the audience and that kind of thing. And I think I, I think people need to remember, as people, I mean, the council members need to remember that we, the public, have dealt with so much in regards to you being on the council. And the disrespect that you guys clearly give. I'm, there are a few more than others, but I'm not going to point anyone out, even though I really want to. You know, like Terry had said earlier, with the bathroom breaks and the this and that and not, you know, paying attention to people's phones, paying attention to talking to the person next to you. You know, I, it's just, I felt like I'm in a high school classroom. I really feel like when people are talking up here, you need to be paying attention. I really feel like when people are talking up here, you need to be paying attention. And I'm pretty sure that at least two or three of you guys aren't right now. Um, and I don't even see you, so there's that. I just, I, people keep saying, do better, do better, just do better. That's all anyone's asking for. And it's not even a lot, considering that you guys are council members of a city. It's, it's not a lot to ask. This is like, what, twice a month? You're doing this twice a month, you're getting paid for it. You're getting dinner probably at these meetings, because I know we did on the school board. I mean, you know, suck it up while you're there, sweet cheeks. I mean, pay attention, do your job. Read the documents that are given to you. Go over the council agenda. I know, it's, it's, it's crazy, I know. But I know that you can do it. You're all qualified adults. And the one thing that I really want to roll home to people is the fact that we see your faces. And the rolling of the eyes, the mumbling under, you know, like, just know that you might think your mic isn't hot, but we can hear the little comments. That's all I have to say.
You can unmute me. The next speaker is Camila Overbeek. You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Camila Overbeek, resident of Westminster. I'd just like to address item five point three. I hope that we can put this rebate program on the back burner. Um, it's unfair to continue such a program when residents aren't even sure our city will avoid bankruptcy. I think we have far bigger pressing issues. And quite frankly, I don't give a damn that we didn't meet the three million dollar cap. Taxpayers are not responsible for ensuring that dealerships keep their sales up. If the program works so well, let the dealerships work together to provide buyer incentives. But don't you dare, don't you dare ask taxpayers to do it. I sincerely hope that this council will do the right thing. Put the program on the back burner until this financial health of this city is secure. We don't have the funds for this, and this is a program that is cutting the fat from a budget, because we don't have the money. Stop allowing for them to bully you, or stop returning favors. Residents don't owe you shit. Do better for us.
Mayor, that concludes, uh, any speakers with their hands up on Zoom at this time.
All right, so I'd like to uh, close all the communication. Uh, next we have consent calendar, all matter, listen to the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless Member of the City Council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action of this discussion.
Would approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
All right, uh, next, item five point one, uh, central cities, navigation center and preliminary funding request of purchase and initial startup cost. Stop report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the community. Um, I'm excited to bring this uh, item back tonight. Uh, so as I mentioned, um, you know, a couple of months ago, the city entered into a preliminary memorandum of understanding with the cities of Garden Grove and Fountain Valley, um, to develop a, a navigation center. So, um, at this juncture, a, um, a location has been, um, uh, has been selected, and the city of Garden Grove, on, and, uh, on a unanimous seven oh vote, um, uh, gave, um, they, excuse me. I'm a little excited about this, but they've, they've actually moved forward with a, um, purchase and sale agreement, which now, um, puts this property into escrow. And so if, um, my city manager Adolfo can bring up what this property looks like. So this is not it. So as this, as this council has, um, you know, in the last year and, and beyond that, um, this council has made, um, you know, trying to, to trying to deal with our homelessness situation, um, you know, and put it as a priority, um, over time.
City manager, um, can't see it.
Oh.
There you go.
So homelessness is one of those issues that, um, that has developed, you know, at the local level in which, um, you know, at the local level, we are limited in our resources, uh, when it comes to staffing and of course, um, services that we can provide. Um, that much is, you know, that much is very clear. And one of the things that this council has discussed over time is the consideration of a partnership. Um, you know, this was brought up last year and, and prior to that as well, um, in, in terms of, you know, going into a partnership with some of our neighboring cities. And so this location is actually in Garden Grove, it's at one three eight seven one, uh, West Street. And so your major cross streets are Westminster and, uh, New Hope. Um, so that's between Euclid and Harbor. Um, it is in an industrial area that's considered, uh, within their, um, their overlay zone for a shelter. Um, and so the, it's currently an escrow at a purchase price of five point six million dollars. The square footage of the site is eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six square feet, with the actual structure measuring eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-three square feet. Uh, the building was constructed in nineteen sixty-four, it is an industrial warehouse. Um, and it's also, uh, and you can't tell from the photos, but inside, uh, the photo, a lot of renovations have already been done, so, um, so it is very much, um, you know, uh, new structure on the inside. So the navigation center, um, would have eighty-five beds and would provide, uh, support services and amenities. And this is the draft schematic, uh, of what this shelter would look like. So as you drive up into the entryway, so you'll see down below is parking. Um, and then the entrance, um, you can tell where, so there's where the main gate is, and there's an entry point where there's check-in, a metal detector, uh, rooms for client services. And so, uh, the intent is that at some point, we'll have an RFP put out, um, for, uh, for a provider to provide, uh, services. Um, those services would include like one-on-one case management, uh, mental health, stabilization services and resources, outpatient health services, um, employment assistance and job training, life skills, transportation, etc. Um, as far as the living quarters, you would have men's, women's, and couples dorms and restrooms. You'd have a warming kitchen, a laundry room, dining, and outdoor lounge areas. Uh, there is a, uh, a dog walk area as well, that's toward the bottom of this. But right now, you can see, where's that dog run? There's that dog run in that corner, outdoor lounge. Outdoor lounge, client area. This is a general idea of what, uh, of what this would look like. And so, um, Westminster would be anticipated to have, uh, twenty-two beds out of the eighty-five. Um, and then Fountain Valley would have, I believe it's thirteen, Garden Grove is fifty. And that's just based on, um, some of the metrics, they're based on the, uh, number of, the number of homeless, uh, from the, uh, point in time count, but also based on population, both percentages came out to, uh, pretty much numbers in those ranges. So at this time, um, the, in, in terms of our share, um, we have, uh, preliminary estimates of what the cost would be for startup, which includes tenant improvements, and then of course, furniture. Um, and so, uh, the, so the costs are, so we're asking for a four million dollar allocation, um, that would come from general fund and then be reimbursed, um, through the, uh, through ARPA funds. Uh, the county of Orange has also provided a letter that they will commit eleven point three million dollars um, toward the project, but that would include five point three million dollars toward tenant improvements, um, and then six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually toward ongoing operations and maintenance. So with the county's support, Westminster's total share of cost, um, is approximately seven point one million dollars. That does include the city's portion of the purchase price, the startup costs, tenant improvements, and, uh, together with the anticipated operations and maintenance costs over a ten-year period. And that is a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar, um, estimate, uh, for annual operation costs. Um, so again, staffs requesting city council authorize the allocation of four million dollars from general fund reserves to a newly created account for the navigation center. And this amount, uh, would again be reimbursed through the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Any amount, um, that would be left over would help cover any anticipated expenses or operations and maintenance. Um, and then of course, um, as part of outreach efforts on our part, um, as, you know, as a city, we'll be having a workshop for the public, um, a community meeting on, again, Monday, October tenth at six P M. in the East West Room, to just provide an overview of what a navigation, uh, center is from some, for, from true experts of you that are in that field. And we'll also have our P D staff, um, who will be out there as well to answer questions and, and, um, you know, provide the public with some information as to what, uh, services they're providing and what they're doing now. Um, you know, to, uh, to help with the, with the, um, you know, the homelessness, uh, efforts that we have right now. And so a more extensive memorandum of understanding among the three cities is currently being drafted. And that will essentially, um, you know, uh, that will essentially, um, put in legal parameters and uh, discuss things about ownership, operation, access, funding, um, you know, uh, it, it's just a little bit more detailed as, as opposed to what we previously had. Um, because, because of course, that is a question as to, you know, what some of our rights would be, considering this property is in Garden Grove, but we're, you know, we're providing, um, you know, funding for it as well. So those will be spelled out in the M O U, and then of course, presented to this council at, at a later date. Um, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Uh, I really want to thank, uh, one of the thanks, uh, oh, really one of the thanks, uh, city manager for your presentation that I am impressed. Uh, this is amazing, this is an excellent item, I think that's really good, uh, project. And this is a great opportunity, this is a good, uh, partnership, uh, between three cities uh, on it, on the issue of homelessness. So this is a really, really good, uh, project, I a hundred percent support, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I have a question, so, thank you for that detailed, um, presentation and all the hard work that you've been putting in it, yourself and your team, Adolfo as well. Um, so this is, uh, you heard what the community's has been wanting, you've heard the council, what the council's been wanting. So I want to thank you guys for, you know, taking that leadership and really driving this forward and I know we had some other things fall through and you just kept going and kept persevering and moving forward, so thank you for that. Um, and then you're going to bring back also in the M O U, uh, equity, what that is and, and how that's going to work out. Um, and then also, at a later time, you would be looking at a service provider that will come back to us.
That, so the, yes, so there would be an RFP that would be put out for a service provider, and that would, um, you know, that would go this, through the same process of council approval, etc., among the three cities. Um, as far as the M O U goes, the same thing, um, I will say, uh, Russ Hildebrand, who is with Jones and Mayor, um, he worked, he's the lead on the, um, on the draft M O U, and he worked on the M O U for the Placentia, uh, shelter. So he does have considerable experience with, uh, you know, a navigation center.
Well, thank you, um, I'm excited about this project, like the mayor said, this is something that we've all wanted and give our, our police department the tools that they need to, to really help the homeless community, uh, for all these years, uh, uh, our H L, uh, H L Os and when back when we had city net, they're fighting every day for, for a bed if, if, if an individual asked for it. And sometimes that bed wasn't there, and, and that could have been the day, the night that, that that person, uh, wanted to turn their life around and, and pretty disheartening when, if there wasn't available. So this is something that we've needed for a long time, and, and thank you for that. And with that, I want to make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Really exciting.
Oh, I'd like to make.
And, uh, I, I do have a question for you.
I do too.
Okay. Um, there's no doubt that this is a great achievement from, uh, staff, getting the navigation center, uh, moving forward. Uh, but I do have one question for either staff, uh, for the P D. Um, our purpose is to bring the homelessness to the navigation center and help them to get their feedback. Uh, and of course, we have to, you know, feed them or meal, meal, you know, have a meal, daily meal for them. And I understand there are programs to get them, uh, back on, you know, back, uh, on their feet. But then, for those who are going in there or refuse going in there, or going in there and then they decided not to stay and come out again. I know that the, the law or the court, um, do not allow them to do, uh, to allow us to do anything with the homelessness unless we have the navigation center. And now the navigation center is in, is in place. What are we going to deal with those people if they kept going in and coming out, kept going in and coming out, or refused to go in?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, to answer that question, um, if we have an available bed for a homeless individual, and they are sleeping, just for example, in a, in a public park, um, and it's after hours, maybe there's a, uh, sport event with children. Um, right now, we, we can't cite or arrest that person for camping or sleeping in the park. If we offer that person another place to sleep, as, uh, as in the shelter option, um, and the person says, nope, I don't want to, I want to sleep right in the middle of this soccer field. Um, now we actually do have, uh, the authority to cite or arrest that individual. Um, and that's case law, uh, that we have to offer a viable option for the person to, to be able to sleep in, uh, which would be a, a shelter, another bed, um, for them to, to call home for that evening or longer, uh, if that answers the question.
Yeah, uh, that answers a part of the question, you know, let's say that they said, oh, okay, I agree to go there. But then the next day, they, they come out and, you know, now again, they, you know, they, um, do things that we don't want them to do, then, then what? Arrest them and put them again, uh, back again, or, by the way, you know, when you said you, you have the right to arrest them, then where are we going to put them? Where are we, we are going to house them? Are we going to bring it to the nav, navigation center, or where we are going to put it in, uh, temporary?
So the navigation center would not be used, uh, to incarcerate anyone. Um, if the person, uh, refuses to move, then we can cite them, and if they still go, oh, thanks for the citation, I'm not going anywhere, I'm going to lay back down on the fifty yard line here, uh, then we can actually physically arrest them and bring them to our jail and book them. You got it.
Now, the navigation center is not meant to be, you know, it's not meant to be long-term housing, so there, there are limitations to how long they can stay there anyway, which I believe is sixty days off the top of my head. Um, but you know, there are services that are there, there are strict rules that are there. Um, and so, um, again, this is meant for people who want to come in and get services so that they can, can transition.
Can you mention a few of services?
Yeah, no, so the, some of the services that, you know, um, so some of the services that were listed, so outpatient health services, transportation, case management, um, an area for them to, uh, store their personal belongings, so lockers outdoors. Um, you know, again, mental health and stabilization services and resources, substance abuse counseling, uh, life skills development, job training. Um, and so again, a, a provider that's coming in there, um, will be there, there'll be staff there twenty-four hours a day. And they'll provide these services, um, you know, for, for those that are staying there. And the expectation is that they, you know, that they use these services. That's the, that's the point of coming to this type of a center, it's to help them transition, um, into, you know, into something else. Um, but it's not meant for them to be there, uh, long-term.
Thank you.
And if I, if I may clarify too, just, uh, the, the reasoning behind this is that there was a court decision and the court decision. there was a court decision and the court decision essentially holds that cities can't criminalize people just because they're homeless. Um the the status of being without a home. So really what it puts on the city and all the cities in Orange County, L A, you know, uh we we have this obligation to off have that opportunity for them to get off the street. And that's what we're trying to do with this navigation center is provide them. This is not in any way uh an incarceration type of thing. This is more an opportunity for them to get off the street. They have to willingly go there. And once they get there, we 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 partner with the county to offer them all the services that hopefully they agree to and and we there are many good success stories. If the person refuses, at that point now, we've offered them a bed and they're not they're in violation of our anti camping ordinance and we can then criminally enforce if they uh continue to refuse. That's essentially the reasoning behind it. We have to do our part and then they the burden is then on them.
Okay. My turn. You know, I I just find that the the numbers don't add up. And um I think this is like awfully expensive. Um so I'm just asking. Um so first of all, I s- I um okay, so tell me if I'm correct. Uh so I have eleven point three million dedicated uh by this, the county of Orange, right? Towards this project. And then you've got um four million, I assume that would be like for each uh uh each city times three, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove and uh us?
No, so it's the the share of costs is actually, I'll see if I can pull it up. And it's actually in draft format, which is why it's not.
Just an estimate.
Yeah, it's not um just, you know, fully disclosable because it is a working draft right now, which Adolfo might actually be able to pull it up faster than I can.
But you're asking for four million. So what's that?
So four million for us is the purchase. It's part of the purchase price. It's the estimate. It's it's a little bit, I will say it's a little bit higher than what the what it actually is. But again, that's because we don't have exact costs until things start getting built. But that's part of.
So they're they're asking four million for from each city. So that's.
No, 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 no. So we're we we are asking, we are asking for the allocation of four million to cover our portion of the purchase price. Um tenant improvements and then the, you know, furniture and equipment that will get purchased or that, you know, will be purchased.
So what are the other two? Okay.
So the other two are pulling. Do you have it?
More or less?
It's it's by share.
It's by proportion. So like Garden Grove is.
Then it would be more.
Close to five. Fountain Valley is one point two.
One point two?
For the purchase.
One point two?
We've set aside, we're we're asking for the four million. The current draft number is two point one. So that's the way that that's the way the totals are rolling right now. But they're in draft form and we're still working through them.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, okay, so my estimate would be, okay, twenty million. Um so if you have the county putting in eleven point three, you've got the three cities putting in. Well, whether it be for um renovations or for um or furniture equipments or whatever, um then I'm gonna estimate it to be about twenty million. So if you divide that into, is there any other startup?
So yeah, so let's see if I can.
Any other startup costs?
No, so as far as the program, total program costs, and this is if the count, like again, with the county, right? So you have due diligence, uh due diligence, administration, acquisition, tenant improvement. And then, of course, uh furniture and equipment. So our share ends up, our share ends up being technically, based on the estimate right now, it's only about two point two million. The we're asking for four on the allocation, number one, um you know, part of the ARPA funding. It's a one time deal. We do have monies in our um federal funds for annual, you know, for annual annual ongoing costs, but we're asking for the four just as a cushion.
I understand.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna add two point two. So that's like uh you mentioned five for Garden Grove, one point two Fountain Valley, four for uh two point two for us, right?
So it's.
So I'm not gonna do four. I mean, I use two point two. So that's eight point four.
So it's an estimate of about four point nine for Garden Grove. One point two or I'm sorry, one point three for.
Fountain Valley.
For Fountain Valley. So based on the number of beds, um we're we're a little less than, we're a little less than half of Garden Grove. And then Fountain Valley is about half of ours. And that's just proportion based on the number of beds.
Okay, so you add eleven point three. Let's just put all of our money in a pot. Eleven point three plus eight point four, um eight point five, whatever. So it comes to about nineteen point seven. So that's twenty million. So then you take twenty million, you divide that into eighty five beds. Okay, I uh I'm doing this estimate and it's like two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars per bed, per bed. And we are taking twenty beds. Okay, so what I I'm it's just not adding up in my mind is where we our share is um twenty beds out of the eighty five and we have a hundred and sixty homeless. We have twenty beds. Okay, you tell me, you explain to me your strategy. So you're gonna and then each one will stay for sixty days, correct? And this is sh- short term stay, not long term stay.
No, yeah.
It's a short term solution. So isn't this quite a lot? It's like two hundred and, okay, then you've got on top of that sixteen hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of operations and management costs per year, which I think is okay, which is okay. Um well, I thought if if the county gives us eleven point three million, that should even pay for the building. Hey, I mean, we're not owning the building. We're, we don't own the building. Garden Grove owns the building.
Well, so the property, the the title is held by Garden Grove because the property is in Garden Grove. There is part of the M O U, there is an equity statement, which states that after the ten year period, if there was a sale of the property and there was equity, that that would be divided proportionately.
Okay, that's really good. That's really good. That's what I want to fight for. Uh yeah. Um but still, how do you justify two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars per bed? Is that's I I have a problem with that.
That's really, I mean, that's really, the cost of purchasing the building is one thing. And as we know, real estate is expensive right now. But really, the estimated cost on maintaining a person per day in the shelter is about a hundred dollars a day. So so you you've got you've got to take the component of the cost of the building out of the picture because we still need a building to have the shelter. So.
That's fine, but what I'm saying is that county is not paying eleven point three towards our building, are they? Are they allowing us to do that? Use it for that?
Five point three million of the county contribution is going towards the acquisition of the building.
It's it's, well, I'm sorry. So five point three million is actually toward the tenant improvements because they are not.
Right.
They're not, they they can't purchase the bill. They're, it's not going because then they would technically have ownership. So it's actually for tenant improvements um in the navigation center, which those tenant improvements will include building those walls. Because right now, you have an inside that is not, you know, it's not consistent with what a navigation center is. So you have to build up walls. You have to, you know, create.
I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but you're getting a lot of money from uh the county. And then on top of that, we have to give you four million. You you I know you're saying that you only need two million, two point two. Uh but you're asking for four. What what are you doing with the extra?
Well, so the extra four would just roll over into whatever. So so now we're gonna have to budget every year for four hundred ninety five thousand dollars ish for the annual operations cost. So whatever's left over from that amount, um we would then roll that over. That's why we're creating a brand new navigation center account. And that money, so we may not, you know, if we have a rainy day situation, we still need to keep this going. Um that money would then go toward those expenses.
Okay, so being that we are using uh four million, we're taking four million from our general funds. And it says in the general funds, we're not allowed to use it towards, I added something somewhere here. General funds cannot be uh used to reimburse for anything that's a or actually America uh the ARPA funds.
Yes, so.
ARPA fund cannot be used to reimburse for anything like this. So how do you reimburse? Right? Because I want to make sure we get reimbursed. We can't afford that.
So we so there's an there's an amount that can be reimbursed, but that's why we're pulling it through general fund reserves right now and it'll be reimbursed. Aaron can explain a little bit. Our finance director can explain how that mechanism works.
So first of all, are we going to be reimbursed by ARPA?
ARPA funds will be used to offset general fund expenditures that are allowed. So yes, in an equal amount, general fund will be going to the navigation center. And ARPA funds will be used in that same amount for eligible general fund expenditures. So it's an equal amount, but the general fund money will be going directly to the navigation center. And the ARPA funds will be going to reimburse the general fund for expenditures that are allowable.
Okay, bottom line. Yes.
Bottom line is yes, the general fund will be reimbursed.
Okay, we just got to make sure because I saw the verbiage. Okay. And then the other thing is that um I know previously, I think my we might have spoken not here, not here, but uh in our other meeting. I don't want to violate any, you know, laws, but I was just saying that I I when I asked that I want to make sure we own part of this piece because I think Garden Grove is 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 smart. Remember, who's at their head? Who's at the helm is a, he's U USC MBA graduate. So, you know, and also he's in real estate. So I just want to make sure that we we state clearly that we are gonna split equity on, you know, that's gotta be clear.
Yeah, I had.
Because look at how much we're putting, we're pouring in.
I had an in-depth conversation with our, with the with the partnering agencies this week. And the question from one agency was, should we be on the title? Um it was decided that that is not common practice for a city. To we're trying to get away from owning property outside the city, essentially. So there is a statement within the M O U that will address your concern. And you'll see that as it comes through here on the separate council action.
Yeah, it's if you're gonna have like a side contract, that's fine. You don't have to be on title like husband and wife and, you know, all three cities together, right? But you can have a side contract, but it's gotta have a side contract.
So we we essentially, yeah, so this.
Because I'm saying that ten years from now, that equity could pay for everything that you're that you're adding up here. And that would be really helpful. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have covered this a little bit for uh and then and then this this also in case, you know.
But at the time, they did not uh confirm with me that they're gonna do that. That's my request.
If it doesn't, if it dissolves and it doesn't and goes away, then then the equity, the M O U comes into place where.
But they didn't, they they didn't uh verify that they were gonna do that. That was just my request and then I, but you're able to do that. That's that's great.
Yes, it's it's built, it's definitely built into practice, protect us. We are, you know, the the advantage of the relationship that we have with the other two partnering cities is that it is a positive relationship and we're in constant communication. You know, we meet um weekly. Yeah, we meet, we meet, we, you know, our leadership, we meet weekly and it's very staff driven and less um you know, less uh outside, you know, other with outside components. Um and so, you know, we have discussed this in great detail as far as um how we're gonna make sure that this is a positive partnership and how it works for all three cities.
Yeah, great. I I mean, I really like to hear that. And I I want to thank you. I don't know who else, but you know, you, Christine Corden and um Adolfo, um Assistant City Manager to uh for making this happen because we've been wanting this for years. So my other question, my last question was, okay, we've got two, we our allocation is twenty beds. So now we've got a hundred sixty homeless, twenty beds, and each one is gonna stay for sixty days. Now, where do you take them when they stay beyond sixty days and they don't have what? They're not rehab, they're not.
They're they're.
Self-sufficient. What do you do?
Well, so part of part of the case management um services is they'll be able to, you know, if there's someone that needs to go on to um, you know, to a different type of shelter, right? Or, you know, supportive housing of some sort, they'll be able to go to that um and get connected with resources. That's the goal. So um so yeah, it's not just like after sixty days, you're out. Um you know, they try to connect them with other agencies that provide um or other, you know, other shelters that provide something that's more uh long term. Um so this is, again, this is that stepping stone uh for us, um you know, to be able to help uh in a in a shorter term of sixty days. And then that, you know, so they'll be able to move on to something more, whether it's their own, you know, their own housing or it's a different type of shelter, et cetera.
And you mentioned that um, so we only have twenty beds. Are you banking on the fact that maybe the other hundred and forty people will not want to?
So we we had, yeah, so we had a discussion um with, so we had a discussion uh with HomeAid, who is actually going to be um, you know, providing the uh the information for our community workshop and they're, you know, partners with Garden Grove as well. They did the, you know, the presentation there. And the numbers that we have, so we are at uh twenty two beds right now with, you know, with the ratio, you know, of having um as many homeless as we do. And you're right, it seems like it's such a small percentage, but there are uh different components. There are several components that go along with that. So not everyone is necessarily going to want to come into a bed at one time, right? Um but let's say, let's say we do. So we're looking at at, you know, again, with our partnership being, you know, um being positive, we're working on ways how you know, if we needed an extra bed or two or, you know, whatever, and the other city has an extra bed, like we'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to use those beds and obviously compensate um, you know, for the use of those beds and then vice versa. Like it's meant to um, you know, it it's it's meant to be uh cooperative and collaborative.
Okay.
But 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 according to HomeAid, the the numbers that we have are reasonable because not everyone's gonna come in at the same time. Plus, the shelter does not support um children. It's only, you know, adult, uh men and women, and then couples who are already couples outside of the shelter. Like you can't come in and couple up exactly. Like that's just not not allowed, right? That that will get you kicked out. Not allowed. But um there are shelters that are out there that will accommodate, you know, families like women and children, et cetera. And so this would, the shelter would not uh, you know, would not be appropriate for them. So um the numbers are, the 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 numbers have been vetted.
All right, so um, okay, I I think I I understand. And I know that we're not reinventing the wheel because the wheel has been uh invented a while ago. And I guess that was a North Spa and uh with Brea and and what other facilities that we could like model after. So I'm not too worried about that. I was just always kind of like, it just just didn't add up. Like, we have twenty beds, we have a hundred and sixty people. So knowing that they can only stay for sixty days or they, you know, if they need extra days, that's.
And that's same thing too. But when when the when the memorandum of understanding is ready to be presented, that we can have a much more in-depth detail, yeah, detailed um conversation about, you know, how that distribution would look like, what equity would look like, et cetera. So this isn't, this isn't absolutely, you know, final at this juncture. This is definitely just making sure that we are prioritizing this amount of money for this project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, oh, um please. So how uh what is the total cost for the entire building, like?
For the bill, is the purchase price of the building?
No, no, I'm saying the total cost with renovation and and uh ready to uh accept uh homeless people.
The total cost is thirteen point six.
Thirteen, thirteen point six. Oh, wow.
And then, like Christine stated, there is annual investment leading up to a ten year term with an escalator per year for inflation.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say and make a remark that uh we've been talking about having a homeless shelter for years. I remember in twenty nineteen um talking to the past leaderships and just it's just for like a conversation, but just like within a year, when you took your post, uh you and Adolfo just uh took the took the ownership of the city and go out there and take care of business and and that's why we we are here. And uh thank you. I really appreciate that. You know, there's a, there's a will, there's a way. Apparently, there's no will back then. So I I really appreciate it. Uh so that's basically this, this is all a we we have to have a shelter. So we can comply with case laws. And you know, in order for us uh for our police department to enforce uh anti camping law, we, by case law, we have to offer shelter. So this is not like for for homeless services. This is, we have to offer them shelter. If they refuse and our police officer can take action, whether citing or making arrests. It's not so, it's not like we, you know, we're offering, we're not really invent a wheel to some somebody, which you say earlier, to have another shelter on top of shelter and shelter. So um hopefully uh once this navigation center up and running, I mean, the words are gonna get I get out. And, uh, people will, um, not choose Westminster to, uh, congregate and hang out in the, uh, uh, public area, you know, because we have a shelter and when our police officer take action, uh, deal with the homeless, they, they most likely will have to comply or facing the consequences. So, thank you very much. I, I greatly appreciate it. Good, great job.
I, I, I just want to quickly point out that I know, um, that we've been talking about a navigation center and it just never materialized. And let me point out, um, to everybody. One of the reasons this is happening is, um, if you could guess why, I, I can tell you exactly. It's that it's really the, uh, networking ability of our two leaders. Their ability to network, they have great personalities. And so I just want to let you know that they're not just, uh, just, just any person at the helm. They're really, uh, it really takes one who knows how to network and, um, who, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's like you got to show that you care for the other cities and they care for you, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just going to sum it up by saying that, you know, it's really your personalities that really, uh, they could see and it shows and you're able to drive the deal home. And, and, and that's how we win. So I really appreciate, I appreciate that. I can, I can tell you that, uh, that's going to earn us a lot of deals, a lot more deals, uh, like this. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to them. Thank you.
All right. So I, I believe that we have the motion seconded and applause. So our roll call vote, please.
That's correct, Mayor. And that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen. And that is to approve the funding request for $4 million to support the purchase of a central city's navigation center to address homelessness and to create a navigation center capital project account 20002-162300 and authorize a budget appropriation in the amount of $4 million to be transferred from general fund reserves account 2000091050. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, American Rescue Plan Act of 2020, uh, funding proposal. So may I have a stop report?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. This item is the review of the funding proposals for the use of the monies provided through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, otherwise known as ARPA. Sorry. But when I push the arrow, it doesn't move. Oh, to the right. Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, in terms of the, uh, my brief presentation, I will provide an overview of the ARPA background, purpose and regulations, a overview of the outcome of the council study session on the ARPA funds. And for the benefit of the council and the audience members, I will provide a brief listing of the funding proposals for the now, uh, budget, uh, balanced budget proposal, uh, provided as attachment one to the staff report. After I finish, uh, that review, I will, uh, discuss the recommended actions. And then after that, am I, the, the department heads and I will, uh, be available to answer any questions that the council has or any requests for additional information. In terms of the background and purpose, ARPA was enacted on March 11th, 2021. Sorry. As I mentioned, it was enacted on March 11th, 2021, uh, where the legislation provided, uh, 130.2 billion dollars allocated to counties and cities across the nation and distributed based on a formula similar to the, uh, allocations for the CDVG funding. For the city of Westminster, that, uh, allocation was 23.7 million dollars. The purpose of the ARPA funds, according to the Treasury Department, was to help local, uh, uh, districts and jurisdictions help turn the tide on the pandemic, to address the economic impacts of the pandemic and to lay a foundation for a strong and equitable recovery from the pandemic. There are a number of regulations as part of the ARPA program. It identified eligible uses, including support, supporting public health expenditures, uh, addressing those negative impacts, economic impacts, uh, created by the pandemic, replacing public sector revenue that was lost due to the pandemic, providing premium pay for essential workers and investing in infrastructures such as water, sewer and broadband. Also in recognition that this program would require, uh, uh, reporting and audits and administrative, other administrative costs. The, uh, regulations provided that up to 10% of a jurisdiction's allocation could be set aside, uh, to cover those administrative costs. The regulations also identified deadlines that the funds needed to be obligated by December 31st, 2024 and fully expended by the end of 2026. On, uh, March 9th of this year, the City Council held a study session to discuss and review the ARPA funding. Uh, at that council meeting, uh, the council was provided with an array of eligible, uh, items. Uh, the costs, the total costs of, of all the items exceeded the allocation by, uh, approximately 16 million dollars. So, uh, study session was to, uh, review those items for discussion purposes. Uh, at the outcome of the, uh, council, uh, study session, the council identified some priorities for the use of the ARPA funds, including, uh, funding items with long-term benefits for the community, items that provide direct support to the community members and items that support efforts to address the homelessness crisis. After that meeting, uh, the, uh, city manager and the department heads refined the, the list, uh, made adjustments, uh, based on the input and priorities from the council. And we have for you today, uh, to review is, uh, the list on attachment one, uh, which, uh, is now balanced. But we also provided, uh, through attachment two, uh, the description of the programs that changed, uh, between the study session and this proposal, identifying, uh, those items that were removed from, from the list, those items that were reduced from the list and some that were added. So the ARPA proposal has five funding categories. The first is the public safety and security, and then there's community improvements, community assistance, addressing homelessness and, uh, uh, identifying affordable housing development. Under the public safety and security, uh, category, item number one is to provide additional resources to address the increase in crime due to the pandemic. Uh, the annual, uh, costs are, uh, uh, estimated at $200,000. So for the four years that remain, uh, in the schedule for, for, uh, spending this money, the estimated cost is 800,000. We have a, uh, number, item number two is a request to fund an additional dispatch position. This item would cost annually 125,000 and our recommendation is to use ARPA funds to fund the first year. And then during the budget presentation for, uh, coming up for next fiscal year, we will, uh, include a funding that position, uh, through the, um, through other funds. Number three is the emergency operations consultant contract. Uh, this is, has an annual co- cost of, uh, just over 82,000 dollars. But for the ARPA allocation, the estimated cost for the four years is 123,840 dollars. That's because we, uh, decrease the amount that would be applied to the ARPA funds, uh, beginning the first year at 75% because that would be related to, uh, uh, addressing the pandemic or reporting on the pandemic. And then it would go down 25% per year. Um, so that's, uh, total is the 123,840 dollars. Number four is an online portal for safety training that would provide a safe option to provide that mandatory training. That estimate is 150,000 dollars. Number, the next one is for, uh, critical infrastructure technology upgrades for digital security, uh, for our IT systems. That's estimated at 1,170,000 and that goes hand in hand with the next item, which is providing the HVAC system upgrade for the unit that, uh, serves the data center that would protect that technical, uh, resource investment. Uh, the next item is a CAD RMS system upgrade. That's estimated at 1,151,500 with an ongoing annual cost of 250,000 dollars. Nine is a improvements, uh, environmental improvements, uh, to be clean and to provide a clean and safe environment for city facilities. This is to upgrade the systems in the facilities, including the community services, uh, building, the senior center, the chambers, as well as city hall to ensure a safe environment for the public, our seniors and the city workers. And number 10 is the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, uh, refurbishment. This would include technology and, uh, equipment upgrades for an estimate of 75,000 dollars. And this next category is for community improvements. Number 11 will provide a variety of improvements at city parks, including improving ball fields, installing pickleball courts and providing park playgrounds at five parks. The total estimated cost for all of those is 4.3 million. Uh, number 12 is the improvements to the park buildings at Blakely Park, the historic buildings. That's estimated at 300,000. Number, uh, 13 is establishing and maintaining a community gardens in an area, uh, that in, on Cherry Street. Uh, the estimate for, uh, uh, preparing the gardens is 110,000 and then 10,000 dollars of operations per year for the four-year period for a total of 150,000 dollars. Under community assistance, uh, number 14 is a, uh, estimated cost of 250,000 towards food resiliency programs that would be provided through our community services department, providing food resources for lower income families as well as seniors. Uh, number 15 is a business grant program for technology upgrades, which would provide mini grants to small businesses within Westminster to help fund those upgrades. Uh, number 16 is the marketing and branding program for Little Saigon for 100,000. This is one of the recommendations that was made in the, uh, blueprint for Little Saigon that was approved by the council. And number 17 is a customer service software contract, which, uh, for 50,000 dollars a year for a total of 200,000 dollars, which would be providing a consultant that would design and help us conduct online service surveys, uh, in two modules, one for the police department and one for the operating departments, uh, within the city. The next category is addressing homelessness. Uh, there are two items, 18 and 19, and they are meant to work in concert. Uh, what, the first is to provide two full-time caseworkers for homelessness and mental health outreach. Um, it's estimated that each of the caseworkers would, uh, have an annual cost of 100,000 dollars. So there is a 200,000 dollar annual ongoing cost, uh, which constitutes 800,000 for the four-year period. And they would work closely with BeWell, uh, in their community outreach services contract. Um, this would provide two trained BeWell specialists to address emotional, physical and social wellbeing issues for patients that are, uh, contacted through the homeless and mental health outreach services. And they provide that, uh, using an integrated public health, uh, care model. And this is an estimate from BeWell that it would cost 897,335 dollars per year for, uh, so that's, uh, just, uh, under 3.6 million dollars for the four-year period. And then for our affordable housing development category, we have an estimated allocation of just under 3 million for a affordable housing development project. What we would do would be couple that with our, uh, some CDVG funds and our home, our ARP funds in order to, uh, partner with a developer to develop that project. So the total allocation that the city received, uh, from the ARPA program is 23,690,019 dollars. That allocation would be used, uh, uh, from that, that number will, uh, subtract the 4 million dollars that was the topic of discussion for item four, 5.1 on tonight's agenda regarding the navigation center and revenue replacement process. Uh, the council previously on August, uh, 25th in 2021, allocated, uh, 20,000 dollars for improvements to the council chambers. Uh, that was the, um, uh, implementation of the, uh, the barriers between the council that and, and to make it safe, which have been recently removed. Um, and then, uh, for administrative allocation, although the regulations allow a 10% uh, uh, set aside, we have determined that 5% would be appropriate for a million dollars to cover those admin, uh, new, uh, ARPA-related administrative costs. So what, uh, is, uh, left after those reductions is 18,670,019 dollars for those proposed projects and that, that is the allocation that we have provided as a balanced budget. So the recommended actions are to consider the funding proposal for the ARPA funds and provide direction for approval of the recommended and eligible items. And to amend and increase the budget by 19,670,019 dollars into the American Rescue Plan account. And of course, this, that funding includes the 18.6 million dollars worth of projects and the 1 million for administration. That complete overview of the ARPA, uh, funding proposal. At this point, myself and the other department heads are available to answer any questions that, for the council or provide any additional information that you may. Just, thank you.
I have, I have questions.
All right, please.
Um, you know, we've seen, uh, can, can we use this, uh, fund to, um, pay for, I guess it's a, my question is, does it require a separate, uh, discussions? Uh, we use this fund to pay for these, uh, frontline workers, our city frontline. Uh we use this fund to pay for these uh frontline workers, our city frontline worker who've been working during the uh the pandemic. Uh like uh police officers as well as uh. Uh the firemen and uh. The public service whoever has to work during the pandemic and you know, most, most like state of California allow. Um fifteen hundred dollar bonus to state police officers. I I guess my question is, do we need a separate discussion to to use this fund to uh offer that bonus to? Our frontline worker during the pandemic?
If you're asking about essential worker pay, we did have it on the original list at three million dollars um when it was presented back in March. Um but at the time when we were presenting items, um that item was essentially uh removed because it was. Um the direction of the council at the time to provide. It was the direction of the council uh to provide um these funds toward things that would directly benefit. Um the community or members of the community. Um and so, you know, in in attempting to balance. The, you know, balance the allocation because we did have a negative um, you know, balance with everything that we listed. Uh that was one thing that did um that was removed from the original list and that's why it's not presented here. But there was a three million dollar allocation that was provided uh for essential worker pay.
There was, right?
There was on the list, like it's 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 on the second attachment as one of the programs removed from the um, you know, from the ARPA list.
Okay, so what does it take for for this council to discuss this? We have to bring back.
This is, no, this is, this is, this is your forum for it. So there, that's why. There is a list of what the current allocations are, which would provide a balanced allocation. And then there's a list in which we provided um, you know, uh programs that we removed. So that is on the second attachment. It also does include uh programs that we reduced or changed significantly following the discussion and then things that we added. So if there's anything that you would like to change on the presented allocation list, this would be that.
How, how much it will cost? I mean, uh we we have, would we pay the essential workers, our city's essential workers uh? Who works during the pandemic? Uh do we, do we have any idea? Ballparks.
Ballpark, we have about three hundred employees um full time, so depending on an allocation from there.
But but they, most employee are not working in the frontline doing the. Police department. Yeah. Firemen, so.
Fire would be our contract, so um that's through O C F A.
Okay, I see.
So um. What are sworn nine ninety five sworn, something like that?
So uh for people working the uh front lines who weren't given time off during the pandemic and unfortunately, most. Who were working did come down with COVID and actually many more than once would be up around a hundred and seventy.
That time fifteen hundred. Plus uh public works, yeah, a few public works employees, right?
Sixty five workers from.
One seventy plus sixty five um fifteen hundred uh. Yeah.
So, uh Jody, I want to come up. So the essential worker pay was something that was calculated through H R so we can kind of expand on what that. Tailed.
Yeah, so I apologize, I'm not, um it's been a while since we researched this, but Erin and I researched this extensively. And there are income limits that made it problematic for us to um give the essential bonus to most of our police officers. Um so that's why we, you know, that's one of the reasons why that was taken off the list as well.
Well, I I totally understand that, but the that the discussion we have, that's very early in the year, is that correct? Yeah, uh okay, so uh a lots of agencies, especially the state of California, we're talking about um bonuses so. To state law enforcement around June, um pretty much so. Um since since this money uh earmarked to um. To help pay for the uh. Pandemics, um the people uh in cities and affected by the uh COVIDs. Uh I think, I think this uh council should uh consider so. Uh using this particular grant to uh pay our essential workers uh who worked uh during the pandemics.
Yeah, I I think we can, it's all about a balancing act, correct? I mean, there's, we have a certain amount of money, we have. A certain amount of categories and and there is a wish list. Um so there's some big ticket items here. Uh it's just, it's just a matter of moving things around. You take some, take some from here, you need, if you're adding some to this, you gotta take some from that. So it's just what it, it's just a balancing and removing.
Fortunately, it's not that easy. So when we called several of the cities who have been giving out these bonuses, they've been offsetting from the general fund. And we got clear direction um when we started having these discussions, I don't remember if it was six months ago that we did not want to do that. And so that's why we navigated away from.
Okay, can we pay our general fund and offset with this fund and just fill it up with the?
It would be similar to the navigation center where we have to offset general fund expenditures with something eligible in order to pay for the essential worker pay.
Okay, that's, let's, let's do that.
So how do you do that if you're, how did, because the ARPA funds needs to be tied to COVID, right? So how do you just?
So um some of the public safety salaries are eligible because they are still dealing with the pandemic, so you can use a portion of that. The problem with the essential pay was the limits of um the calculations, a percentage of the. The average, and I don't remember exactly what the calculations were, but it would have to be offset through the general fund.
Okay, I have. So then you get, so you would come back, do some st- some research as far as what positions can be uh paid? As you said, there were some limitations, Jody, um who that who can receive essential pay?
Yes, um so if I remember correctly, and and I apologize, it's been a while since we researched this. Um so was anybody? Which, sorry, which is a majority of our staff. Um so we would probably be close to the, how many full times? We would back, be back up to about the three hundred mark. Um. So.
So the, the one, the item that was removed initially, you had, what was that, three million?
That was an estimate, yes, while we were researching.
That was way off. And attachment number two.
So it's four hundred and fifty if we base it off fifteen hundred. Our, our original estimates were higher than fifteen hundred.
So if that's a desire, you got to just come back with um. You know, shifting things around. Um yeah, um that was the desire of this previous council when we had this meeting before. To make sure that this, we had direct impact to the community. So there are some, some. Some items on here that is accomplishing that. Um I just had a couple of questions of of, you know, like some of the big ticket items under public safety and security. On the, you have a couple of big ticket items on here for critical infrastructure technology upgrades for digital security.
So so do you want to?
Yeah.
Save it off somewhere else or?
Bring, come back with. Just things around.
And propose the uh the fifteen hundred dollar bonus to all the essential worker.
And 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 so what's the difference between that one and and? Because why are that's such a big ticket item and also the the CAD system? That's a pretty good chunk of change there. That for those two items there. And then.
So so we, we okay with the fifteen hundred dollars per employees?
So we're gonna, yeah, we will add it, we'll notate it on here, that that's something we desire, but we're gonna try to work tonight on. Being close to a, you know, balanced allocation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, on those two items. It was the, my question was, uh, why is it so high? Some such a big ticket, uh, critical infrastructure and technology upgrades for the digital security. Number five on the list. And also number, number, number eight on the list.
As Vice Mayor, so I I will address number eight and um the Assistant City Manager will address number five.
Okay.
Here, I'll, I'll go ahead and go.
Go for it.
Here, uh automated dispatch records management system uh is basically the, the. Central nervous system of the police department. It runs everything. Every time you call into the police department. And your call is logged and sent to dispatch and a police car. Uh and police officer goes to that location and a disposition is recorded and a case number is sent. And a report is written and tracked and sent to court. It it, everything deals with this. When you go, hey, how many calls were at Westminster Park? It's logged in our CAD slash RMS system. If uh in in our um quarterly reports on crime, we go into that system to pull what the the data out of. How much crime did we have? Um for for, from the time a call is, a call comes into our communication center. To the time a police officer deals with it and a suspect is arrested or whatever the outcome is and all that paperwork flows. It has to do with this system.
So is that a, an upgrade or a totally new system?
Our, our system right now is twenty three years old. Uh it's the oldest system I know of in in the county. Uh right now, most CAD systems are about ten years old. That's usually when police departments change that system between seven and ten years. Uh ours is very old. Uh if I'm not mistaken, we're the only police department still with that current vendor, definitely in the local area. Uh and quite frankly, you have a worried police chief that that system will just crash and die and I will not have data. And remember, we're requested to to send by law certain data to the Department of Justice, the FBI tracks how many homicides. They track um uh some new data based on our enforcement efforts with race. Uh we wouldn't be able to do or comply with any of those laws if that system crashed. Because it's more than double the age uh of its lifespan, um we need a new one in those.
So this is for a whole new, a whole new system.
Whole new system coming in, yeah, there's noth- ours is antiquated and quite frankly, I'm worried the whole thing will just come crashing down.
Okay, thank you for that. I have questions. Okay.
Questions.
What's that, City Manager?
No, I was, I was gonna say, um, you know, just to, just to hit home on how, you know, how the system's functioning, if you want to mention. What happens when it crashes and how many times we've actually had it?
So we have had uh system failures in the past with it, so it's. Knocking on our door saying, hey, you better give me some love. Um and and when, when that happens, it is a problem. We don't capture that data. It slows our responses down. Um it 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 definitely is a problem and it has a cost. Every time we have to go back to that company, we're paying thousands and thousands of dollars for them to patch. Uh things for us or put Band-Aids on things, limping this thing for another few months or another year or two.
Yeah.
One way or the other, we need a new CAD system and they are expensive.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the other one, Assistant City Manager?
Union Mayor Council, um regarding number five, which is critical infrastructure technology upgrades for digital security. Really, that's the day to day uh infrastructure needs of our community. Um connecting to city hall, within city hall and between city hall and the police department, the corporate yard and all the other city facilities. Really, um we have been behind on I T as well for many, many years. Um a lot of people have been asking for uh different ways to access city services over the years. Uh how do you upload plans to planning? How do you do uh online transactions? And during the pandemic, we were forced to kind of take these old antiquated systems and make them work. But now that we're more accessible to the world, we're also more vulnerable to the world. So this is addressing those uh those needs, building up the infrastructure, cybersecurity threats.
That's what I was just asking, cybersecurity, there's some ransom lately in the news, you hear about the ransom.
That, that is directly, the ultimate goal would be to protect our data. Um and as we've opened ourselves up to provide more services, we are more vulnerable. So that would be addressing that vulnerability.
And and this is including, I I know years back, a couple of years back, I remember we had a presentation with the plan department was doing as far as. A new, a new system that we were working on to where it was easy to uh access. Projects in the community, permits that were open, is this is completely different than that or?
No, we, we, we've started to implement those services over the years. You remember that as Planning Commissioner, but we were doing that on an old and antiquated I T system. And this is essentially providing some overhauling to that to protect us now that we're more open to the world.
And then, and this is just um preliminary estimates, right? This is, you're still gonna go for, you know, R F Ps and and all that.
Absolutely. There is no one vendor that will be getting this dollar amount. We will be going through our due diligence to make sure that we refine the scope of each of these services and that we bid those appropriately.
And then, um, the other one I've asked you this, I think, earlier or when we met, but I never really got back. Um the clean and safe environmental improvements to city facilities.
That, I will turn it over to Jake for that.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, what is, what is that? And and we're, we're, how'd you get the numbers for that?
Sure. So this is what we have, um is the three buildings, the city hall building, the council chambers and the community services that we have. Roughly about seventeen A C units. Most of them are exceeding their service life, they're twenty year, twenty plus years um in service. We constantly have the problem with these A C units had been not working properly and been down. Um there's a regulation from O C, OSHA require that. The new, the A C unit need to have the HEPA air filter. HEPA is a, is a standard for the filter to make sure that they, we have uh the proper. For, you know, uh restricting the bacteria or viruses in in the, in the closed area. And also they require sixty percent of the air had to be the outside air. Most of our units doesn't meet that requirement. And also they're not energy efficient, as you know, they've been, you know, twenty years ago. So we have cases that if the system is down, we cannot order part. They're not available until three, four months later. So that means the building gonna be hot. For example, this particular building where we are right now, if the system is down. Basically, all the electronic equipment in this room will be overheated. Because the way that the building were constructed back then, it was in, you know, zone and in different places like, you know, the newer building. And um so I just give you some um information over the three years that we have about forty four service call to the specialized contractor. That have gone down and responded to the service call and it costs us about hundred fifteen thousand dollars for those three years. And if our units just go out, then we pretty much have to wait four, five, six months for the new unit to come in and they're very expensive. Um we also, the community services building is also a designated cooling center. So if anything happened to that building, then we, we can't provide air, cold air to to the residents.
So you understand how um we have limited funds and we're trying to, trying to uh fulfill every, you know, all the different wishes. That the council and the community needs. Council is asking for, we're, we're trying, we're that voice of the community, the community is asking for. So these numbers, I mean, like I asked before. That's one point nine, that's a, a big, big number for uh A C. And have you gotten actual quotes for these numbers or?
Yes, we did. We have talked to the contractor, we looked at overall the system. So this will cover majority of the new A C unit, but it also um provide with a new platform to support these units. And also that we have to um worked on the um roof around that. Because every single time you do that, you have to work on the ducting, you have to do, make sure that it's not leaking into the building. So those are the costs that we come up from working with the contractor uh for three different buildings.
Um and I'm assuming you took into the cost of your upgrading all these A C units. Did you also get a quote for electrical? Because um you may have to change in some of that as well.
Absolutely. Through these contractors that we work with, they are specialized in A C units, so they look at it overall, you know, overhaul of the system. And absolutely, when we go out to this project, we have to get the designer from the mechanical engineer or whoever specialized in this field. To take a look at each building, what we need to do, consider electrical, mechanical and the support of the roof and the roof membrane itself.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Not quite done yet, uh Councilmember, sorry about that.
No problem.
Um. The ball fields, I think this is your department still, Jake?
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what, what's, I, I don't, I don't see a description of what, what does that entail? I mean, it's very vague information as far as, wh- what is that gonna do? Is that just the dirt? Is that the grass? Is that the, is that the fence?
Uh originally that we had the request to have. Uh, originally that we had the request to have, they called a brick dust, which is kind of like the cover of the ball field. And also the lasers, so we can make sure the ball field is level for, for, you know, for play. That pretty much we focus on because back in two thousand and fifteen, when we do the citywide park improvements, we have done a lot of improvements around the ball field, like installing uh, new fencing for the dugouts. Um, you know, new backboards for, for those fields and also like, you know, the bleacher that we install, new ones as well. Um, when we look at all the parks that would have the ball fields, this is kind of like the, the major need or major requirements um, that for those area. So for this is, we have about three cities own park and two ball field that within the school district.
But my question is, I, I get that you're, you're saying that you're, this is, this is an improvement on the field, the outfield and the diamond itself, correct?
Correct.
What about the other part of the, the dugouts? And the, the fencing, I mean, who, did you look at that, the condition of those as well?
We did. So that's, that's what we improved those area back in two thousand and fifteen. And they are, I would say maybe about seven years old and they're still in good conditions. And any, any minor, for example, like the back, uh, the backboard needs to be painted, our staff, our maintenance staff typically take care of them.
None, none of that needs to be uh, upgraded at any, any of these fields.
Um, the only thing that you can, you can look at is some of the ball, some of the dugouts that doesn't have the shake cover. Um, we, we have a total of about ten dugouts and only two of them would have shake um, cover at that um, right now. At the time that we did the, the improvement of parks, the decision was not to provide um, shake cover for all dugouts because we have issue with, you know, homeless being occupying in those area. And providing that is kind of like, you know, create a, a, a place for them to hang out. So that's why a certain part that we don't have.
Um, well, I mean, you can't really take that in mind. I mean, the children are gonna be using it and I don't know if you've noticed, our summers are getting hotter and hotter. So I mean, if, I don't, should, that shouldn't be a deterrent of why not to install that. I mean, we need to protect our children, don't you think? Maybe we can come up with something different where we can do these uh, if it's possible. And, and maybe move, I mean, I see here you're doing uh, uh, three big pickleball courts. Right? I mean, i- is there a new one? From what I understand, is there one currently being installed at Siber Park?
Sir, um, run right now that we converting a low usage um, basketball courts. We have, actually, we have two area for the basketball court. So we, we use the one that being low use and convert into a pickleball um, courts for, for the area.
So I think we should move some of, if you need to move some monies around, when you, when you bring this back. If you have to uh, is right now you have one Westminster Village, Bowling Green and Russell Parks for pickleball?
Three parks.
Three parks. If, if you have to do two and then move some of the money around, then I'll leave that up to you. But I mean, we need, if you're, if you're gonna do, my feeling is if you're gonna do a project, you need to do it right. It needs to be complete. You're not gonna just touch a little bit here and then just leave something that's still unfinished. So if you can look at that. And then the, uh, I, I'm sorry to taking so much time, but the other one is for the Blakely Park. Did you get with um, the Mr. Don Anderson and everybody there as far as what needs to be, what needs uh, improvement, what needs, and, and what is it gonna cost?
Yes, we got together with Mr. Don Anderson and we also have staff have been working at the Blakely Parks to, just to do some improvement outside. Um, the list had been provided by uh, the Mr. Don Anderson from Historical Society. And um, so those are the needed improvements that they couldn't able to, like I said, fundraise during the COVID.
And is that enough, you know?
Yes, we have about three hundred thousand dollars. That should be enough.
That should cover it? Okay. All right, well, that's my two and hopefully you can bring this back and kind of shuffle some things around. All right, thank you.
Um, there's no doubt that uh, staff spent a lot of terms, you know, going, going through these items. So I appreciate for your uh, effort. Uh, although I do have a few questions. Um, yeah, I, I consider that this is a responsibility after a council to review and approve. And we need to understand what uh, we are approving. Um, first question is, is it possible to reallocate uh, these funding if the council approved today? It is possible that later on, if we see the need, we can move it around? Yes or no?
Though, yeah, y- you can, as long as we haven't expended the funds. But certainly, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee that we would. Um, because a lot of these will require, you know, a bid process, et cetera. Um, a lot of these will take some time.
Okay, I respect that. Um, the second question that I have is, would you please uh, explain a little bit about number eighteen and nineteen? There are two full-time worker, caseworker for the homeless and mental health. And we budgeted for eight hundred thousand dollars. So how many years is it, uh, is it, we're talking about? Two hundred thousand dollar a year, a year for a caseworker if we do it for two years?
I refer to.
Four hundred thousand dollars if you, so, so I like to, to that has to question.
Have no problems if you want to try to answer that, Jake. Mayor, Council. Uh, so these two items are closely related to one another. Right now, uh, and at the direction of Council, we have one full-time caseworker for all of the homeless uh, in town. But limited coverage that personally can work forty hours a week. We have two, all the ones out on an injury. We, we normally have two HLO officers that are designated and handle all HLO-related um, incidents and they have special training and that's how they spend their entire day. When we do have two working, um, only one of them can go out with the caseworker, leaving the other one without a caseworker to try to solve in untraditional law enforcement um, methods. Uh, the issues that uh, homeless individual might be having. So this will basically marry, if you will, a caseworker with both HLOs. So you have a true team going out there when we get those homeless-related calls, trying to actually solve those issues for the homeless individual, for the community. Uh, and, and, and it's a complete team. Um, so that's what that cost is. Um, and then Be Well uh, Outreach Services, take it to the next level. The uh, this would be for a team for half the day, every day, seven days a week. And that, that's why there, it does appear to be uh, a large ticket item, an expensive item. But this is great coverage. Twelve hours a day, every day, three hundred sixty-five days a week. You have a van with a paramedic and a clinician in it. That is the next level above a caseworker like we would have. When our HLO and, and our caseworker cannot solve the problem, they can call them and they'd be in town twelve hours a day responding to these calls as they came in. And they are able to uh, service the person above and beyond what we can do for them. The paramedic onboard will treat them for, uh, oftentimes they have open sores or other injuries that went untreated. They're able to service that. The clinician's able to uh, deal with them if they're in a stressful situation, calm them down, handle the calls for service that there's a homeless man uh, having a, a mental episode uh, in front of my business. They're there to, to go there to de-escalate it, um, to find them uh, housing or other resources they need. In addition, they also handle um, students uh, in crisis. So now we have another option that's there, that's here, the same hours that, that school is open to where when our police officers go to disturbance at, at a school and the student is having some type of mental breakdown. We can now look at them. They come in, they handle it. It's not police officers. Uh, and the kids going, oh, they, little Johnny was taken away by the police. No, you, you have a paramedic and a clinician there in a van with no emergency lights and bars in the windows and stuff, dealing with that. So I, I do know it's, it's expensive. Uh, however, you get a lot for that service. Um, we are surrounded by other cities that actually use them. Um, uh, just the other day on the way to work, I was behind one of their vans that was driving from Huntington to Garden Grove to uh, presumably handle a, a call. Um, but they don't stop in town to help us because we're not part of this.
My understanding is that we have to uh, obligate this uh, the ARPA, ARPA funding by twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-four and use it by twenty twenty-six. So how many years that you are accounting for this?
We are uh, looking at four years of service for that.
The four years services, uh, that means we have to start. How, how are you going to use it for years? You have beyond the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six because we are now in twenty twenty-two already. So by the time that we finish this, it's going to be twenty twenty-three and by twenty-three to twenty-six is three years.
Th- this is one contract that we actually feel we'd be able to start this year if Council takes action soon.
Um, next question that I have for um, staff is um, you mentioned that uh, in March ninth, we have the discussion about a study session. Uh, was that a separate study section or is it study section here in the council meeting? I, I, I don't remember. I don't remember. Refresh my mind.
It was a study session here with the, with the council and the council.
So how many ti- how, how many hours that we spent for that?
It, it was, it was actually ver- it was virtual. It was, yeah, we hadn't returned in person yet, but it was virtual.
It was Mark.
Okay. Okay, uh, I know that we, we discussed about it. I don't know how, how deeply that we, we discuss about these item. Uh, but um, I am looking at the programs that uh, staff removing and also reduce. Um, we just got this one three, three, three days ago. So, you know, we, we have a lot of question about it. One of the item that uh, I'm concerned about that the programs are removed from the uh, ARPA study session is the police uh, department overtimes. Now, I believe last month or the month before, we were talking about the manpower and you said that you are shortage in, you know, a lot of people. And with the um, with the removal of this uh, overtime hours, will it satisfy you or will you have enough people to cooperate without needing uh, PD for overtime?
But, so that's a very good question. So there, it, it's actually two different issues. We were asking the council at that time to, to basically replenish our overtime account with ARPA funds. However, uh, with looking at different priorities the council had and having to make tough decisions on what to cut and what to fund, we moved those funds to other projects at the, at the council's direction from the study session. It doesn't put us in the red because uh, for overtime, because it is actually a line item in our current budget and future budgets that we have the overtime. Um, so we actually do have that. We did go over it, but because of all of our open positions, we have salary savings that finance was able to move into that overtime account to cover. So we're confident we'll be able to do that again, um, and cover our overtime usage. So it seemed like a prudent move to fund some of the other uh, council priorities and just take care of this with the general budget.
Thank you. Uh, I do have another question for staff. Um, with the twenty-three, twenty-three million dollars from ARPA and there will be one million, twenty-two million and we take one million for administrative uh, um, cost. How do you arrive, uh, drive uh, from that? Or how do you come up with that? Because one million is a lot for administrative cost.
The Finance Director would be better suited to answer that question.
Okay, Chief, Chief, before you go, Chief, before you go, I had a question that was related to Be Well. Sorry, Councilmember, uh, Wen. Um, on that Be Well, from what I understand, didn't I also go out to domestic issues? If PD arrived at other residents, do they, if you, if it needed? From what I understand that they, you know, domestic.
But I, I believe they do, but Commander McCormick has specific information on that question, so I will let him answer that.
All right, Councilmember Wen.
Union Council, uh, Be Well will respond out to any residents when somebody's having a mental health crisis. Uh, it, there could be domestic violence going on, but if there's a mental health crisis going on, they will respond out there. If there is any violence involved, they will require an officer to go out to make sure the scene is safe before they'll come in and take care of what they need to take care of.
So, uh, so they can if need be.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, I have a follow-up uh, question about Be Well, Be Well program. So I look at a report because uh, City Fountain Valley didn't want to involve. That's why the price increased. So how many city in that, in that contract right now?
We were in talks with Fountain Valley to do a joint contract.
Back to me. Um, yes, we were in talks with Fountain Valley uh, to take a portion of the services. So they'd be patrolling both cities. And we, similar to the navigation center, um, it would be proportionate on who's using it the most. Seeing we're significantly larger than them, it would probably be us. But nonetheless, they would take several hundred thousand dollars of the bill. That still is possible. However, uh, I think with the delay in us being one of the last cities to spend these funds that are just sitting there, uh, I don't know if they moved on. Um, but uh, I, I think they're sending a message, when you guys work things out, give us a call. So I, we put in for the whole amount. I hope to come back saying we have a few hundred thousand dollars extra because they bought in and now you can decide what to do with it, I hope.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So on the admin, um, ARPA allows to, our ten percent and um, which would be two point three million. Um, we thought that was a little bit too much. Um, so we reduced that down to a million. Um, there are a lot of reporting requirements, so we have to do quarterly reports. There are a lot of um, um, tracking um, statistics that have to be gathered, uh, legal costs. And if any of these programs in, needed additional staffing, that fund, those funds could be used, uh, the admin funds. And if there was any left at the end, they could be reallocated. But they're mostly for consulting and legal fees.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, what I see is there's, there were a lot of questions from the council. And I think that the council should understand um, a little bit more about, you know, items that we are approving. So, you know, I, my uh, my recommendation is to, you know, let's spend some time go over this again. If we need another study session to deeply uh, dig into this. Uh, I feel more com- comfortable with that because I, I know that we uh, we spent time talking about it instead of, you know, uh, approve based on um, the, the planning from uh, staff. So uh, that's, that's my recommendation.
Yes, I, I like to ask our City Managers, is any view associated with the funding that our city we have to, we have to pay or is any deadline that we have to decide?
Well, the dead, the deadlines of allocation um, were listed um, as well as when we're supposed to spend the money. So it's four years for spending the money, two years for the allocation.
As long as we spend the money within four years, we are okay with.
So I guess at this, at this juncture, I would be um, you know, it, it, we can have a study session, an additional study session. Um, you know, keep in mind as we drag this out longer, the costs are going to change because things are expensive. Um, you know, and, and obviously things.
Or do we have any option that has, has some portion of the list that the City Council uh, feel really comfortable that really want to move them forward. So we go to approve that first and then we come back to study other area that members of City Council believe that they need more time.
You can absolutely do that. Just keep in mind though, um, you know, as far as the, the amounts go, um, again, you, you can absolutely do that. Um, if there are some items that you feel that are more urgent and then we can come back with the remainder. Um, but at this point too, if you see anything on the list that you want to resurrect from the removed, um, you know, from the previously removed list, then we can certainly put that on as well. Like I said, the, the whole goal is to try to come back with a balanced, with a balanced allocation. So, you know.
I think one more, the other comments from Council tonight will give staff a good idea of what what we're all um, thinking about and she bring it back one more times. Cause we have till December thirty, was it, what was their staff report, uh, debit, December twenty?
December thirty-first in twenty twenty-four for them to be obligated and then the end of twenty twenty. December thirty first in twenty twenty four for them to be obligated and then the end of twenty twenty six they have probably expended.
Right, um, now that I have you, or maybe this is a uh on the CDBG item, so we're allocating, I can't read that, two point nine. Um, what what's currently in our CDBG account? Uh, um.
Item um uh to uh item number twenty.
Affordable housing.
What we were asking for the approximately three million for affordable housing. Uh, what we would couple that with, uh, we have about one point two million in CDBG funds. And uh and then in our home ARP funds uh that would be eligible for types of of expenditures or that that type of. That number here, hold on. Uh. We have one point three, well, approximately one point four million. So that was the plan was to then whatever the amount that the council approves through ARPA money, we would incorporate into an RFP looking for a developer to uh partner with us and and using those those funds.
Yeah, that was my question. So that was, I I'm in agreement with that and and my question was how because this is enough because I think we put into the Westminster Crossing approximately five million, I remember.
I believe that.
So this is enough to to really get out there and partner up with the affordable housing developer.
That's that's what we are hoping and we would go through that process for the RFP process, but uh, right now we're it we have begun to develop that, but we wanted to know what the amount was so that we could move forward with that um and inform anybody that was interested in partnering with how much we could contribute.
Contribute. Yeah, I think that's something really important for the community. And as you know, Westminster Crossing is a great project. They came to our city. So this is something that I'm really excited in agreement with putting that kind of money in there. So thank you.
I would like to ask, I mean, I was, I do have that noted here that I I think the amount. How did how did you come up with that amount? Two point nine eight five three three nine?
There had to be one program that was used to balance the the product project. But it just happened to be that uh the CDBG money was one point two million. So we had asked for four million uh initially, and that was comparable to what we had set aside for the homelessness uh um project. Um, so this is one one of those balancing uh refinements that we had to uh that we had to use in order to balance that budget.
Well, being that this ARPA fund is a one time fund, I I I notice, I remember uh you mentioned that it takes you three years to save up. It's like you put in your piggy bank for three years before you could you have enough money to, you know, to do a project, an affordable housing project. Um, I, you know, I think it's Delarosa. That's also another beautiful project. And I'd like to see if we could bump up that money. Um, and see if we can, you know, the uh the northern stretch of that strip um near Delarosa. See if we can figure out how we can buy them out and do another affordable housing project. Because, you know, you've got Delarosa is beautiful and then you've got the northern uh part that's so rundown. I would I would like to see that number uh increased, you know, because it's a one time money. And I don't want to have to wait three another, what, six years before you you get another, you save another three three million or four million for a project.
We do try to get grants and other other funding, uh but this is one where we haven't identified a project that we would go out to RFP to partner and find a developer that would help us do that.
But do you know what project I'm talking about?
I do, yeah.
Great. I think you you should look into that to see and um if there's any money from this ARPA fund that we could devote dedicate towards the affordable housing project. Uh, I think that would be great.
Yeah, that's that's a good point, but that's why I asked how much we had in the CDBG in home. So if you total that up, does that about, what does that come to?
We have approximately three million here, one point two in CDBG and one point uh one point four about in the home. So.
We put, um, I think we put in five million for Westminster Crossing.
But the thing is that you first you have to go and purchase the land. I think for the Delarosa one, if you're talking about the one that's closest to it, it wouldn't be the uh crossings. The crossing is different, but the Delarosa one, I think it's, you know, the northern piece. I I I remember someone reported that the the value of the land has gone up or something like that and that it was become un it was becoming unaffordable to um to to buy the people out in order for you to use that land for further development. Do something like the Delarosa.
Are you talking about the plot, the the funky pears plot plot?
Yeah, yeah. Right. Like I said, it's a similar strip as the Delos.
Okay, don't.
It's Delarosa, right?
Yeah, there's Delarosa and then there's the other adjacent property that.
The adjacent property.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have money to buy them out and that's why it's the way it is. But it would be, you know, would be, it would make that whole corridor very beautiful if we could do that. So find out. I I think it's it's worth it because now this is a one time money. You know, you're getting, you're never going to have money to do something like that if you don't take advantage of it.
Yeah, so right now just kind of looking at this. So you're interested in putting back essential worker pay. Interested in increasing number twenty for an affordable housing development project. Also interested in looking at number eleven um and improving more than just the ball fields. Um.
Yeah.
And decreasing the pickleball court.
Yeah, if you had to only do the two pickleball courts because currently we're doing one at Sigler, correct? So that's, we're not really losing. We're still going to have three if we do that.
Okay.
You can move some of that money or.
And subject some information. So we have researched and see how much roughly each duck out going to cost for the shade shelter, I mean shade cover. Um, it runs about twenty to twenty five thousands each one, and we have eight right now. So it it's equate to two hundred thousand dollars. So if we take the pickleball court from one of the park out, so it's kind of equals the same amount.
Yeah, that's good. Perfect.
So if we remove one one parks out, that have enough money to do the shade cover for the for the all the duck house.
I I do want to, yeah, I do want to note on the Park West, which is actually the Tony Lamb and then um was it Gillespie Park? So those fields are their shared joint use with the school districts. Um, and so I just want to make it clear on improvements of those. So we're have we the one especially at Tony Lamb Park, um, it is gated. It's not currently programmed for um for, you know, for actual games, but it's really just used for um, you know, for practice. What are they doing back there?
I would need to upgrade. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Those other sites are entirely city property. Um, like the city manager was mentioning, both Tony Lamb and Gillespie are joint use agreements that the cities had with the two different school districts. Over the years, access to those fields have lessened to the city. You we've started um securing schools differently in recent years, completely fencing them off. So it's it's been a challenge to get into those sites. In addition, our use of those types of facilities has decreased. So Gillespie currently, I I went back several years. It's decreasing. We don't, we're not even programming any um baseball or softball practice or games out there. Um, same with Tony Lamb Park. It's strictly being used for practice from travel ball teams. Our local youth sports organizations aren't using them. Um, so it's really something we need to look at if we even want to pursue maintaining.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the case, then why not? Why have it on here or or just upgrade the ones that are city property there and maybe do more on those instead of just doing a few things?
Yes.
And and get away from, if you're saying that there's limited use on the ones that's joined with the school districts while maybe just do just just a field on those.
And Jake and I will evaluate that and we will also have some discussions with the school district and, you know, let them understand where we're coming from.
Okay. All right, well, I I think you get the idea where we're where we're going, or at least we're, yeah. So so I think if you bring if, I think you you got the idea what council wants. If you bring this back one more time, I think we council can make a final decision and just and approve it. You know, at one other time. I don't think study session is necessary. It's just going to take up more time, time that we don't have.
Is that your your motion?
Well, that I think you're going, you're going to bring this back. Your mo- my motion is to take, my motion is to take for staff to take in account all the council's discussions tonight and bring this back for within a.
Can I also add add to that? Um. Um, can we have the uh start, not the study, but whatever you have there, can we have more than the time that we have right now, like three days ahead of time to 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 review it?
Yeah, I know.
Because we we need to look into that and then we'll help you have question and we have question before the, you know, going to the meeting.
That's no, that's absolutely fair.
Okay, so is that okay with your?
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right, I second that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I I want one other thing. Um. Okay, so the city may use these funds for, and I think one of the things that like the second bullet where it says to address the negative economic impacts caused by the public health uh emergency. Um, I think, you know, I and I'm I'm just wondering because there is a one time money and it's very valuable use of money. Um, what about the uh Willow Street area Westminster? I I know that it's we're not using it. Are we allowed to use it for um like any kind of um improvements and economic in terms of? You know how it it looks so distressed? Would it fit into this criteria? We could do something for that area? Or or like the Springdale area, you know what I'm saying?
No, I I I completely understand. It depends. It depends on what the use is going to be for. So we'd have to con, we'd have to refer to our administrative consultant. Um, you know, in the legal team to find out if it's.
Take a look.
So are you looking at um improvements to like the the um the aesthetics or?
Anything that could fit into that core category that we can do for that area, in including aesthetics.
Are we re.
Or to look better in or because it says, I think that that area is kind of health hazard. Um, look, look into it and see that whole area.
Sure.
Uh, like I said, we, you know, we lost our RDA funds and we we only have this and we've got twenty three million dollars is a one time money. And I know we've spent a lot of money on parks and all that and we've got uh, you know, other funds um that we could use for parks. I'm not saying that we're not gonna spend on parks. I'm just asking if you could look into that.
We'll look into it. I would say I would be reluctant to propose any kind of program that's going to directly, you know, provide some kind of rebate or anything or or assistance to a particular business. But but in terms of, yeah, because, you know, we 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 had issues with our uh business loan, for example, right?
Yeah.
And repayment. So um but in this particular case, you know, uh, we can certainly look at, you know, aesthetics um enhancement, I guess, of infrastructure um and see if that falls into the category.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe that we have a motion and a second on the floor that uh staff will bring that back.
Mayor.
With the.
It one one thought I was just having, just just to make sure, I don't know, but the are there any items on this list that are urgent that might need actually to move forward or like such as the CAD system?
Yeah, that's why I asked before, yes.
Weekend, chief.
The CAD system, yeah, yeah. If there's urgency, just particular items, again, you can, but just keep in mind that once you've allocated that, there's not really an interest in coming back with those particular items. So the amount of money that you have to um, you know, to consider at the next meeting will be.
So I like to ask our chief uh to recommend all the urgent item that city council we have to approve.
Yes, mayor, and and thank you for allowing me to come back up with with items that are in in my opinion and belief uh on a on a timeline here uh and urgency. And one is, and I think I already did explain it and can explain it further if anyone needs it. Our CAT RMS system, that is one thing that does worry me that we will have a catastrophic failure. Um, in addition to uh and we have had um in the last month, uh, our nine one one system go down twice. Um, that very much worries your police chief because when people call nine one one for help, they shouldn't get that the little lines disconnected or a busy signal or whatever they got, but they weren't able to reach help until we were able to figure things out and of course throw in our backup. So our nine one one calls were actually not being answered by Westminster Police Department. We had another police department that had to take those calls and then route them to us. That is a significant delay in an emergency. Um. In addition to that, uh, we do have the IT concerns that the assistant city manager brought up. Uh, that also does worry me. We do have um uh unfortunately um people out there that are very skilled at uh coming into your networks and crashing things and holding all your data hostage. It's happened to Orange County, uh, Orange County cities more than once, uh costing them millions and millions and millions of dollars. Our hands are tied in law enforcement. Oftentimes, these suspects reside outside of uh the United States jurisdictions. And you either have to pay for your data millions of dollars or to pay for a complete overhaul of your IT systems. So I would say that that would be on the urgent list is is.
So only only two urgent item that you recommend our city of our city council approve by.
I would say that those those two.
Okay.
I believe there are.
Anything else, anything else?
Well, those those two are, those two are critical. Those two are absolutely critical. Everything else, you know, whether it's um you know, whether it's stuff that we can hold off to the next meeting, but those two are simply critical. The CAT RMS system, yes, it has actually gone down several times, um, you know, in the last month.
Right.
Um, and then the infrastructure for the digital security, um, you know, there are DOJ requirements um for us to be compliant with our security systems and we're actually at risk at not being compliant.
All right, so I'd like to move that our city council approve item number five, number eight, right?
I can amend my motion because we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, um, so, yeah.
All right.
Pretty, thank you, mayor, for that. Uh, I amend my motion.
Right.
To approve line item number five and line item number eight.
Right.
On with to approve those tonight and then the rest of the items uh staff bring back at for our next meeting or when next soon as possible meeting.
Who was second?
I concur to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Motion and uh second as recommended.
Thank you, mayor, and that motion was made uh by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen, and that was to approve line item number five and number eight and um for uh staff to um follow up on the directions provided by the council and to bring back to the city council. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item, uh, reevaluation of residential rebate program for great changes. So may have a staff report, but I think uh this is a really good item that our city council, we had that for the last uh five and a half years. And I think that a really good program that really uh motivated uh like people leaving our city shop and uh help our city, help the businesses in our city. So. Shop and help our city, help the business in our city, so I think this is really, really good program, I strongly supporting that, yeah. But if the city council, uh, want a staff report, so may I have a staff report or city manager? Would like to explain?
Sure, so back, sure, so back in, uh, twenty seventeen. Um, the city council approved what was an economic development strategic plan that addressed different priorities for economic development. Um, and so one of those, um, one of those. One of the components of that plan, uh, was this rebate program and so, um, it would encourage. People buying cars in Westminster, registering their cars in Westminster so that, um, you know, number one, the the sales tax stays here, but they would get a. Um, a modest rebate and so the discussion back then, um, you know, the council approved a a five hundred dollar rebate. Um, and that was approved in May of twenty seventeen. So it was, um, after the strategic plan was, um, was presented and so that rebate program, um, has basically been called. The, you know, it's it's been known as the shop Westminster rebate program or the auto rebate program and it has expired as of. May thirty-first of of this year and so, um, uh, the dealerships that were interested, uh, or that were participants of this. Uh, reached out not too long ago to express, um, you know, interest in, um, you know, if the council would consider. Bringing this program, uh, back to light, um, to encourage, you know, those residents to purchase their vehicles in the city. You know, there was note that was made in public comment, um, about used vehicles, uh, the, you know, and this is unfortunately before my time, but when the agreement was written. Back then, um, you know, the vehicles, uh, they were, they were new vehicles, but used vehicles were also. Uh, receiving the rebate, though it wasn't noted in the agreement.
What is occurring, what is occurring, what is occurring programs only for the new or for the user new?
So it was, it was, it was new and the city was paying out used as well.
Oh.
The new and used, so just a purchase, purchase of the vehicle, it did not include leased vehicles, though, which.
So basically the rebate program, it depend on the measure, right?
The the program back then had it coincided with, um, yes, with the sales tax measure. It did, it did coincide with it, um, it didn't start till after there was a, until a sales tax.
Right.
Was, yeah, it did, it, it till it was approved, but that was because that was contingent upon, you know. The city having finances to support this through economic development, right?
Right, right.
So, um, it just, it just happened to, you know, fall in that respect and then five years, you know, five years, it it actually expired. Sooner than five years, um, and so that's why it expired May of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I think this is a really good program, that program, uh, really encouraged resident in our city, we, uh, buying. Vehicle and at the same time, you know, uh, to increase our tax base, so.
I have quite, I have. Have a question, so it says here, um, on this, the the program provided. Uh, one point six in residential rebates. Out of that, how mu- how much did that generate in revenue for the city?
So as far as tax revenue goes for, um, so tax revenues for the dealerships, for example, they're actually confidential information based on the government code. So we can't, we can't provide that particular data. So unfortunate, yeah, so unfortunately without them knowingly disclosing it, but I but I will say they are among our top gen- revenue generators in the city. It's about the extent that I can provide.
Um, and then these, the the this, these, these funds, where were they come, what account, where they come from?
Economic development.
Hmm, can we afford? Money come out of that for this?
So right now, our economic development balance is about five million dollars, so the. So as it stands right now, the answer would be no, because again, we're we're up against, you know, lack of a large revenue source. Um, and so, you know, for for this, if. If the council projects that. Things play out and that the city will generate more revenue than it currently does now, then. You know, it's, it's, it's possible that based on, you know, those projections, maybe you could allocate. But again, that really comes into play, there's a lot of factors that come into that, it's the amount of the rebate, it's, you know, projection of the vehicle sales, it's. You know, how much you want to cap it at, it's, you know, again, these are all different components, you know, do you, do you want to have a minimum of the vehicle purchase? But these are all things, um, that would ultimately have to be discussed, um, through a a public hearing process.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, the reason I'm just kind of hesitant, because this sounds like you're trying to spend money. The one that we don't have. Two, the. The we don't know for a fact for sure that the community is gonna approve the current tax measure, it's gonna be on the November eight ballot. There's, you can, there's no guarantee of that, correct?
Right, so, yes, so.
So we're gonna spend money, you're saying for us to put out money that we don't, no, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying, I know, so sorry about that. But I'm just saying, so we're, this sounds to me kind of like kind of a financial, uh, not very responsible thing.
So I get, I get where you're going with this, but you know, so as of right now, we're not asking for an allocation because it has to go through a public hearing process and. Anytime that there's an economic, you know, there's a subsidy of over a hundred thousand dollars, there is a new government code section that came out a few years ago. Um, that basically says we have to go through a process and reporting process, so, you know, again, because I can't. Provide certain information as of right now, it's really asking council if you're interested in, if you're interested in moving forward. You know, with this, in which in that case, we'd come back with reporting to fulfill the government code requirements, we'd have public hearings, it's. It'll be, it'll be a while to get there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that. Uh, let me just add to that because she's, uh, correct on that, there's, there is a government code requirement that when you do a subsidy. Like this, we have to do a report, we have to hold a public hearing, so. While we're asking from you tonight is, are you interested in pursuing it, if you are, then I. City manager's office will then look at maybe what some of the other cities are doing, come back with a program that's comparable. And then there's a report that would have to go out, we'd have to hold a public hearing as to what the benefits are of this program. How many jobs it adds, what's the public purpose in in doing it and how long it will last, that's all a requirement that is, uh, relatively newer. So, um, and then we have to post it on our website.
Right.
And so it maintains it there and every five years you have to.
Right, so, yes, I, yes, I totally agree that, so is there any way that our our city manager could able to bring it back at? Like, a a a second meeting in October, because this is a public hearing anyway, so all the member of the public. Uh, invited. To come to, uh, give input of comments.
Timeline wise, second meeting in October, I don't know.
Yeah.
Not time for a public.
I would think probably not till December or so, late November, something. It's gonna take a little while, because we have to do the economic analysis on it and do the comparison with other cities, it's just gonna take a little while.
Take the old agreement, clean it up, things of that nature.
So, and when you, and when you bring this back, like you just mentioned city attorney, you're gonna compare. Uh, not, uh, financially, how we are with other cities. If they're in the same financial position that we're in.
Remember when both, when, you remember, well, you weren't on the council the time, but remember when you had to come out with Bolsero and this big old report? About, you know, the economic, it's gonna be the same thing, it's essentially the same thing.
How much work does this for staff?
Well, we don't have an economic analyst, so we would have to go get one, so that would take a little bit of time.
But don't we have a in-house staff? We don't have in-house staff.
I still write staff reports, we don't have in-house staff.
Um, so you're saying you're gonna go out, so you're saying that we're gonna. Spend funds just to do the research for this, is that what you're saying?
We would have to spend funds to do the research for it, it's, it's, it's the cost of doing that business.
How much?
I don't know how much a consultant would cost, because this is the first time we're actually doing this program with having this.
Basically, in order to do this, we have to hire a consultant to come up with a study.
You need, you need a consultant to do the economic analysis, yes, we're, we unfortunately don't have one on staff.
I think our director, Erin Box, could do it.
I think she handled the finance.
She could do a lot of things, you wanna try her out? She's good.
Oh, is there any way that our city manager can, uh, try, uh, to look into it and if you think that you can bring it back like? Second meeting in October, so be it, and if not, so give what an answer for the next meeting, is that okay with that? Okay, I am for the second meeting in October, but if you think that there is no way that, uh, uh, we can, uh, have that, so I think.
I, yeah, I am ninety-nine percent sure that there is no way because we are already. By the time we do a public hearing notice, which is ten days out, and then we need to do the analysis before that, we have to post the analysis before that. There's no, I don't, I don't foresee any consultant that's gonna be able to do this in that amount of time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be developing a scope, bringing them under contract, reviewing the scope, that takes time.
I ju- I just, um, personally, I just feel that financially, we're not in a. A good position to expend funds on this and then we don't know. How much even, um, city revenue came in from this past, the past program.
Yeah, so, and and that's the difficult, that that is the difficulty about, you know, some of these, because because tax information on a business is just confidential.
Yeah.
I think there's like three of us that have access to the tax records.
Yeah, we cannot ask them for it.
We can't.
I wouldn't.
But, but, you know, I, the things that, you know, I I've heard comments about like expanding. Um, a rebate program or expanding to a shop Westminster program beyond, you know, dealerships. You know, and that's, and that's, and that's something that we would, you know, like to do at some point. You know, the auto dealers are are among our highest revenue generating, um, sources, um, you're right.
Is that from sales of cars only or is that from parts and from what else?
And so that, and so that's, that's one of those dynamics of an auto, you know, an auto dealership and and I don't, I don't run one, but, you know, when people do buy. Cars or new cars, there's this tendency, because I do that too, where you end up going to your dealership that you went to, because you've already established that relationship and then you. Buy your parts there, you do your service, you get your oil change there, you, you know, so, um, so in terms of their revenue, again, hard to pinpoint what that is. But that is potentially a component, right, is that if you buy the car at your dealership, you're gonna take it to that dealership, especially if it's a new car.
So I have question and I don't want to put you in a spot, uh, so. Explain to us, all member of the city council, when we need a, uh, you know, like consultant to analyze, so what would he or? She go to analyze?
Well, I think Christian's better on answering what is involved in an economic analysis.
Right.
Because they actually just did this in Placentia not too long ago, so, um.
Yeah, yeah, basically, it, uh, the report identifies the name and address of everybody that would be participating, so that would be the dealerships in this case.
Right.
Start and end dates, the description of the economic development subsidy, including the. Total expenditure of public funds, uh, or revenue loss to the agency as a result of that program. Uh, the tax revenue that will be accruing to the local agency as a result of this subsidy, like what are we gonna get out of it? The net number of jobs created by the economic development subsidy broken down by full-time, part-time and temporary positions, that's, that's the the general nature of what it is. So I wouldn't say that it's like hugely complex, but on the other hand, it does take some time to look at that. And, uh, and again, hold the public hearing to discuss it and then post it.
Yeah, I I think I totally agree that we need to have a public hearing, but I mean that, you know, like. Second meeting in October, I think that, uh, if we really, really want to do it, I think we still have time to do it. Yeah.
I think the staff just said.
Why are we pushing for a second week of October?
Or, you know, if, if you think that we, there's no way that we can do it in like second meeting in October, so we can. Have that like first meeting in November, because, uh, remember in December, I think we have a new council.
Yes.
You said that realistically you would be be able to bring this back in December.
I don't think that, I don't think you want to, I don't think you want to do it in like December, December, we have only one.
Why don't you find out how soon you can get a, uh, a consultant and then by next time we can, yeah, report to us and we'll know better.
Okay, I think that's fair.
No action, no action for this.
Is there a reason why we could not just continue the the rebate like we have in twenty sixteen?
Because it already expired. It's.
And the new law requires a public hearing.
That's, that's the dynamic, it's, it's already expired and so this is actually, um, this is essentially a new program. So, and then the new law with the subsidy unfortunately prevents us, uh. From doing it the way we did it in twenty seventeen.
All right, so, uh, I don't think that, uh, we need to take an action, I think all the members of the council, we, I have a feeling that we want to continue, however, our city manager are going to look into it. Whether or not you have enough time to bring it back as a public hearing item. Uh, second meeting in October, but if there's no way that we can have a public hearing, you know, in the second meeting in October, then so be it, yeah. All right, so we're good.
Action.
So we don't need an action, am I correct?
Okay, cool.
All right, so, uh. Next item. A resolution to adopt the amended and update conflict of interest code for the city of Westminster.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second to prove this item.
Thank you, and that motion was made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. Um, and that is to adopt, uh, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California. Amending and updating the conflict of interest code for the city of Westminster for designated employees and officials and rescinding resolution number five zero two six. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Thank you, councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, mayor.
All right, thank you, uh, next we have comment from the council agency members, including AB one, two, three, four, report when required.
I'll go first.
Okay, go first, please.
Okay, uh, thank you, staff, for, um, fun-filled ball festival, you like that? Fun-filled ball festival, all F's. I had a great time, I stayed almost to the end, um, and I even danced, so I really had a great time, uh, I had a ball. And I know, um, our staff put in a lot of time to prepare for this and, um, so I'm, I'm not. Only gonna thank Public Works, and I think Public Works get all the thank yous, right? But I think at this time I have to thank all of our staff because I saw. I was looking at, I went from booth to booth and lo and behold, I saw our staff, I recognized a lot of our staff at the booths, manning the booths, including. Uh, our planning department, um, I I love the display on, um. I guess you must have brought the same, uh, things that you showed at the public hearing at the outreach. The open house, um, yeah, on, uh, the, um, Westminster, Westminster Mall there. So, um, that was great, really great. Um, I'd have to say I'm really looking forward to, um, every year and I think this might be the first one in a couple of years, right? Since COVID, we haven't had one in a couple of years, so thank you, staff, great work, thank you.
Uh, I'll go next, um, yes, I'd like to, um, echo councilmember Ho's remarks as far as the. The fall festival and the sixty-fifth celebration of our city, the birthday of our city, so that was great. I had a really good time, it was a little warm, so it should have been the summer festival, but. It was pretty hot and we were out there dancing, I got out there, funk station was awesome, thank you for that, Vanessa for. Organizing that and again, thank you for all our staff that was there and there early and put up all the pop-up tents, did all the work, that was awesome. I think, uh, we do it again next year, I think it'll be bigger and like community. You know, the more we do it, the more the community gets excited about those kinds of events and and we'll keep having a bigger, bigger turnout. So thank you for that.
So thank you for that. And, and, um, I just wanted to briefly, um, give, um, um, our community, hopefully they're watching, um, some, um, updates on, um, what's been happening in, in Orange County as far as, uh, um, hate crimes in Orange County are on the rise. We've seen it all, all over Orange County. And, uh, just briefly, um, just for one year from 2020 to 2021, Orange County hate crimes and incidents, incident comparison. Uh, first, uh, 398 hate crimes and hate incidents were reported in 2021. That's an increase of 6% from, just from last year. I mean, from 2020, sorry. 97 hate crimes were reported in 2021. That's a 13% increase from 2020. 301 hate, hate incidents were reported in '21, a 14% increase from 2020. 22 reported hate crimes in '21 were motivated by sexual orientation bias, an 83% increase from 2020. 10 reported hate crimes in '21 were anti-Asian Pacific Islander, a 43% increase from 2020. 153 reported hate incidents in '21 were anti-Asian Pacific Islander, a 164% increase from 2020. So it's happening everywhere in Orange County and, and, and here in our city, we're not immune to it. In 20, in September 21st, there was a pretty horrific hate crime that occurred. And like luckily, it, it could, it could have been worse. Uh, there was an individual who, uh, threw gasoline on another individual and, and attempted to light that gasoline. So luckily he failed at that. And at the time he was, uh, doing that, he was, uh, spewing, uh, hateful slurs to this individual about this ethnicity. So here in the city of Westminster, we are a very diverse community. And that is what makes us strong here in the city is that diversity that we have. Um, but I just want to remind our community that if you, if you see something, you witness something, say something, speak up, report it, call the police. Because if we stay silent, we're, we're, we're just as bad as the persons who are doing this. So please pick up if you witness something to our, um, we can, we can need to stand up against hate, any type, all types of hate. There's just no place for it in this, in our world today. So I just urge our community to, to please do so. Um, and that's all I got. Thank you, staff.
Um, I just want to thank, uh, staff for all the hard work that you put in. Uh, I know that you work on a lot of things. And I don't want to mention a specific, you know, including, uh, our PDs. Uh, uh, we appreciate for all the hard work that you, you know, for your effort. Thank you. That's all here.
All right, Kasim Odell. Uh, thank you. Um, I'm just like the rest of the council, enjoy the, um, festivity of this, uh, Westminster 65th birthday. Well, you know, I was talking to city manager, um, uh, on Saturday, maybe next year, if we can, uh, line up a few of, uh, local entertainers, uh, similar to Garden Grow, they do it every year at the park, and it's just like all day from morning to like evening, you know, line up, uh, um, they, the entertainer will be happy to volunteer their time and then sing a few songs or do some performance, but, uh, you know, something like that we should have if, uh, in Westminster. It wa- it was a fun event and I have a great time. So thank you, staff. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, thank you. On behalf of city council, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to thanks our, our division, Fire Chief Ron Robert for his, uh, dedication in, uh, serving Westminster community. And, uh, I'm really sure that you go have to really good retirement, but we're going to miss you. Uh, one of the thanks are all city staff to organize a really, I think, really nice event. Uh, wow, I've seen the Westminster, 65 years old. Wow. Uh, I, uh, I, I, I think I, I see a really good progress. The city had been, uh, uh, doing well. I think that as long as we continue to work together, the city, the community, we work well together. I believe that we're going to have a good future. And, uh, well, everything, uh, look really, really calm, I think really good. Member from the community, they feel, uh, they feel really excited. Um, I have an opportunity to talk to some of them in the events. And I think that they feel, uh, motivated. I think after two years of COVID, so now we have more events. And our police doing really, really well. So I want to thanks, uh, uh, our chief of police for your leadership. I think you really, I think a lot of people really respect you and, uh, you earn the respect. Everyone in the committee really appreciate everything you've done. So one, so one thank you, chief. Oh, and I want to thanks, uh, our Westminster Chamber of Commerce. Uh, for the last several months, I participate in their luncheon, they advance excellent. So our, uh, Westminster Chamber of Commerce, they, uh, they've been reaching out to recruit more bases, I think. Uh, I really appreciate that. I think that we need to have a support, uh, from the bases committee as well. So the next, uh, meeting will be on Wednesday, October 12, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.